And so that helps mitigate some of the concerns. Under the pumps, they'll also have a catch basin system that'll catch any gasoline or oil that spilled and it'll go into a separator. And separate the water out from the oil gas. Uh which is, I believe it's a DQ law that you have that anyways.
Oh yeah.
So it's following the law. They've added, um, they do recognize that this truck stop will be heavily used by uh trucks and trailers, just regular campers uh and trucks. And so they've added uh fuel stations up front for um the irregular pickup truck and and the pole trailer. Uh so that people can even easily navigate that system and so. Um you kinda see the flow of of the traffic where it encourages um traffic to come in one way. And then face their trucks away from the the residential area. Uh that's something that that we like as well, but overall, we just wanted to bring this updated site plan to you. Not for approval or anything, just so that you know that Loves is still out there working on on things and this is kind of the direction that they're heading. So it's more just for informational, we wanna make sure that we're working with Loves out there and um as issues and concerns come to us then um we can talk it through. But they've been, uh just from these changes alone, they've heard some of the concerns that were out there. Have tried to mitigate those as much as possible. Other than that, that's it that we have for this item.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you Walter.
You bet.
Okay. Inter-local agreement, uh Mac on bluff.
This is the bluff inter-local agreement, last year you had um about the same time. You had approved the original uh agreement with bluff. They created a town and and are now standing on their own. Um this inter-local agreement and not too far different from any of the other local diff- inter-local agreements that we have with Blanding or Montesal. Uh we've gone through it and made some um needed changes, but in your packet, I've kind of provided provided a summary of the changes. Uh it's a summary sheet if you would. It's just a one, two-page summary sheet of kind of what's what's going on. Um I I took the old agreement with the new agreement and did a red line. Uh and the whole thing was pretty much highlighted red just because of the formatting and spacing and so it really wasn't clear on what was changing, so I quickly did this summary last night, I'm hoping I've caught everything. Um if not, mayors here as well as some of the city council members that could um address anything that I leave off or or mention incorrectly. But what we've done on here, um and I'll I'll quickly go through this is um in the original, uh you had the county removing uh snow on the airport, uh but no classy roads. Uh this one, the county is removing snow on designated classy roads that are indicated in the inter-local agreement. Um as well as up to um the airport on that main road. Um we have the fees and everything that we charge. Um personal removal, including the salt and sand in those as well, so we've got those costs i- in the new agreement. Um typically, we don't, my understanding is we don't receive a lot of snow there in bluff and so this is pretty infrequent uh that this will happen, but just in case. Um then we're there to help provide that support and they will pay us for for doing so. Uh in the old agreement, the county is to maintain the capital and facility improvements to the airport. Um the town now is responsible for maintenance and operation of the of the airport. County uh will continue, like I mentioned, to remove the snow up to the airport. Um the town had entered into an agreement with BLM and so that was no longer a requirement of us is how I understand that. Um what you don't see in there is the county will provide grass weed and brush control. Um at the airport, that's no longer needed obviously. Um but we will continue to um provide the noxious weed spa- spraying on the public rights of way. And this is according to code, this is something that we do throughout the county. And so we remain consistent throughout the county in there. Um in the previous argument, ownership of alleyways, um the county maintained ownership of alleyways, this one didn't make sense, so we're um acknowledging that we're gonna begin transferring the alleyways to bluff. Uh so imagine you have a square piece of property and the county owns all around this square piece of property. Well, let's get those alleyways to um to the town. And so we acknowledge that in there. Um in the old ar- agreement, you have the fire and emergency services, county to provide fire protection and emergency response consistent. Whether the rest of the county, including incorporated areas, um remained the same. Um the EMS, the mutual aid agreement is still in place. Um mutually, like I mentioned, mutual aid agreement remain, the county is not responsible for delays. Uh and the town is encouraged to train and run the EMS uh system, they've been working with staff or with this effort. Um several volunteers that are being trained right now um to assist in that effort. Uh in the past, law enforcement, uh county to provide and maintain status quo. Um if needed, uh it mentions we can increase the services uh through an MOU or another uh inter-local agreement. Um in the new one, we have law law enforcement is really being uh at a level consistent throughout the county. And the response is based on severity and availability. Um so if some catastrophic happens, um the sheriff, um they'll just continue to act as they need to act throughout the county. Um bluff nor any other town is really a priority, they're just gonna go where they need to go. Type thing, and so we acknowledge that. Um we also encourage the town to to have their own in the future, obviously, as they grow up as a town. They're gonna wanna have their own police force, um but that'll come in the future. Um the sheriff, by code, by Utah code, they are able to um charge for certain fees through an inter-local agreement, we have acknowledged that there is that situation, so in certain sit- situations. According to code, the sheriff may apply fees, and a lot of it's transportation. Uh fees, things like that, transporting inmates, um you know, or incarcerated people back and forth. Hospital, things like that, um but we just didn't, we put that in that language um just in case. And we continue, if we have to increase services, we can do that through an MOU or a an inter-local agreement. In the previous agreement, we had justice court. And the language in the previous agreement mentioned that, you know, if bluff needs the justice court, then they can reach out to the county if needed. Uh to me, we've removed that language, I think it'd just naturally occur if there was that need. Um and so we wouldn't, we didn't need to have a an agreement for that, it would just have to happen. Um in the new agreement, we've got one-year road sign maintenance on classy roads within the town. Um we've included the cost uh for that maintenance in the document. Um so that we have that captured. Um we continue with the recreation services and facility funding through pit, pilts, based on the per capita basis. Um and the census data that comes out, and so we'll be looking to adjust this, just so you're aware. In every town or every city um agreement that we have, we need to, once the new census comes out, make the adjustments according to the new census data, whether it's big or small. Um so we'll see some adjustments in the future, but right now, we're still honoring what we're doing consistently throughout the other cities in the county. Transit rent tax, one percent matching for marketing promotion, this is the same. Uh and it's the same in all inter-local agreements as well. Uh this is kind of really what predicated and what brought up about the um the need to adjust and modify the inter-local agreement with bluff, and that's the land use and building development. Um in the past, so you got the town to cover the county building inspector expenses until the town has their own planning and zoning commission and permit inspection department. Well, they do now have a planning and zoning commission. Um and so it also in the old agreement, you had the town will not reimburse the county for expenses for contracted ins- inspector from another jurisdiction, um the county will assume that expense. In the old agreement, you have the county to email and provide a building permit applications for response from the town. And then the town agrees to provide a written response back to the county, uh the building inspector to follow county codes until the town adopts its own. Uh the county to email and notify the town of all requests for variances. Uh the town to provide written responses to the county on variances. And the county agrees to Utah code, to agree to Utah code and follow Utah code for the urban development in the county uh within the town per code. The changes that you see in the new agreement, obviously, the town to administer their own land use ordinances now that they have a planning commission uh zoning commission for themselves. Land use application in that come in are going to be referred to the town. So we don't, we don't have to do anything with them, they are the first touch of of any of those documents that come in. Uh the county will not engage in land use review. Development questions go to the town's planning and zoning. The county administers building permits after the town clearance through a land use clearance determination. Uh a land use clearance means that the development can occur, so it's kind of a checks and balances, we're checking with them to make sure this can occur and it meets their planning and zoning. And then they, if they tell us yes, it does, then we can go ahead and proceed. The land use clearance will be issued on town forms and signed by the chair of the planning and zoning. And county will inform all prospective applicants for building permits of the need to go to the town first uh for the land use clearance prior to building permits for construction. Uh the county will provide town with copies of all building permit applications, issued building permits and associated permit documents upon request. The building permits issued when the building official is satisfied that application is complete. And then all building permit fees are paid and the applicant has delivered and executed a land use clearance with the town. Um builders and licensed, uh builders have to be licensed to construct and all plans are complete in compliance with Utah code. And the county and town will confer if questions arise, and so I I and I like that statement because it it always brings together the fact that that we're partners in this. Uh and the need to communicate is is going to be constant. Um but the communication would first begin uh from the town, we need to make sure that we include the town first. They check off on everything, uh and then we can follow up from there. All building permit fees for construction inspections shall be collected and retained by the county, similar as provided for unincorporated parts of the county. Um so we're not treating them any different um through other cities within the county. The town and county confer as needed to assure all review processes are coordinated. Um that is the end of the summary, mayor, can I? Can you think of anything I've left off and pretty much covered it?
No, purpose excellent.
Okay, mayor checks off on it. And I do appreciate the mayor and and their time.
Yes.
Their willingness, um I know that the, for me, this was in motion before I got here. I slowed it down a bit so I could wrap my head around it and we've made some changes since then. But I do appreciate the the town's um patience uh and willing to go through this effort while I catch up, but it's been a pleasure working with them to to get this far in the agreement.
Thank you.
You'll be presented with this later on in today's meeting for final approval of that agreement.
Mayor or um sayers, either one of you like to make a comment? No, it's okay.
Thank you very much for your patience, um thanks a lot Mac for for everything. Uh Mac came into something that was already ongoing and uh it's been a little bit, um we we had some back and forth, but it's been very positive and thank you very much for everything, uh for work that's done.
Thank you.
I do have one comment. Um the roads department, um and the survey departments have really been helpful. We've had some ongoing knockdown signage and issues that we've had to ask the county for help on, the lawless agreement was pending and we got full cooperation, in fact, more than full cooperation. They've gone over backward to help us, so really like to thank San Juan County and you Mac for getting this done, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Question?
Uh Bruce, and then I'll go to Gray Ash.
Uh part of the summary, Mac, you talking here about uh county and town will confer if questions arise. Um what does that mean?
So a lot of times when you're building a building, so they're gonna receive um the applications and the applications are gonna go through their planning and zoning. And then we're gonna be doing the building permit, but if there's ever, uh say there's a deviation from the original plans that were approved and we have questions as staff on on how to approve things and things have changed, we've gotta reach back out to the town to make sure that they're aware of it, so we're not answering the questions ourselves? We're going back to the town, okay, what did you approve and, you know, we're seeing this change, this modification, do you approve of this? So we wanna make sure that at all times with planning and zoning, building permit issues, the town is in the driving seat for that.
Well, I guess I have a question maybe about that process. Prior to them becoming um a town, the county kind of administered the planning and zoning in that area, but I understand that the the town now has done some rezoning of the of the areas in the community and some people that had commercial property now are being there uh the zoning change has changed the commercial to residential where they bought the property thinking they were gonna be able to develop the property as commercial. But now the town uh uh doesn't wanna work with with certain individuals on their commercial development, which when they bought the property, the the county had kinda given them a green light that they were in a commercial zone. And so how are we gonna resolve those kinda conflicts that have come up?
Good question, mayor, I don't know if you have an answer for on the conflict um on the rezone?
Well, with all due respect, Commissioner, um if someone is unhappy or disagrees with how we zoned, there's an appeal process they can follow. And I don't feel that this is an appropriate forum to address individual grievances.
I'm not trying to do that, I'm just trying to understand how
Yeah.
how the county and the town are gonna work together on these kind of issues.
I don't, and I could be confused, but I'm not sure that that that's an issue that needs to be resolved or that should be resolved between the county and the town, the town is now a legal entity of its own. And I might just turn to Mr. Laws, my sense is that the county would continue to resolve anything that they're zoning, but now that bluff has taken over its own zoning, we would resolve those, I'm not sure those would require issues in that area would require the town and the county to communicate or resolve.
I I I think the way that it, the way that it's done, the way that this lays it out, the dispute, i- it does remove the county from from the dispute which which is beneficial to the county, because if if, for instance, a lawsuit were filed, the county is simply in, is simply putting, giving permits and and doing their portion of it under what bluff, the town of bluff um has set forth, so it would be the town of bluff's laws or ordinances that were being challenged. And so the county is 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 one step removed from that and the dispute would be between the property owner and the town of bluff. Um that dispute would also be whether, if the citizen, for instance, if the property owner felt like their property was, that their rights to build something in that location were vested. That would be a dispute between them and bluff town, because bluff town has now taken taken over and the county is simply doing their portion of 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 enforcing or following through with the county bluff's rules, not the county's rules.
So would there be, and I think kind of what you're hitting at, is would there be a grandfathered where they came in under the county planning and zoning? Are they grandfathered in if they began that process?
Individual property determination, but it would it would be between, it would not be between them and San Juan County, it would be between them and bluff to say, town of bluff, we are grandfathered in under the county's rules because we had done this and this and this and had been approved and so our rights were vested and, I mean, it gets incredibly in-depth, but it's an individual basis, there's not a broad brush that you could paint all property owners
They're grandfathered.
I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if the county has any culpability, if they had given property owners kind of a a g- a green light when bluff was not incorporated.
Yeah.
That then bluff comes in and rezones and then it
It would be, it would be.
It brings the red light up and where the green light used to be.
It would be a dispute, I mean certainly the county would be involved, um because, but maybe as a witness rather than as a litigant, um which I am fully in favor of us being a witness rather than a litigant, it's a lot less expensive. Um but that would be a discussion that the that that property owner would have to have with the town of bluff, because it's the town of bluff. Their their um organization that and uh creation as well as their ordinances that would have been intervening factor, and so it would be between the property owner and the town of bluff.
What I'm referring to is this statement that the county and the town will confer if questions arise, so apparently on on a zoning issue, we're not gonna confer.
That, well, there there would be, if if the property owner comes, let's say the property owner were, just in a hypothetical here, the property owner would come to to the county and say, hey, this is, this is what we had, and the proper, and the county staff looks at it and says, I'm not sure that that actually conforms with the the new zoning ordinance, for instance. Then they would go to the town of bluff and say, hey, are we reading your zoning correctly, this is what the person's asked for. Is is this accurate? And then the town of bluff would would weigh in and say, no, that doesn't comply. Or yes, it does, then the county is simply following through with what those regulations are with the town of bluff. And any dispute would be between that property owner and the town of bluff.
Well, I just, I just see a possibility of a of a property owner coming to the county and saying, hey, when I purchased this property, you had it zoned as commercial.
Yeah, that great.
And that's, those were my intentions and now bluff has has taken over the jurisdiction and they've zoned me out of commercial and and put my property into it is
Into a new zone.
Bluff and and the county willing to to meet to try and resolve a situation like that.
I think we would have to, I would hope that bluff would work with us on that, because there's during the transition, I think there's there's going to be that.
I think there is, I think there's.
Just naturally it's gonna happen like that, and so um I I think it's something that, if there are situations like that, that it may be wise to pursue.
So we've been really good to to give and take with bluff on what bluff is asking us to do and so I'm just wondering if that that is gonna go
Go place.
Yeah.
So this particular interlock agreement is still under process of being developed to both, both um and once it, just then it comes for us, for us to acknowledge what they're what they're doing. And so at this point in time, it is open for recommendation and the discussions. That what it is, my friend, salam.
Uh salam, um you know, uh I'm not a hypothetical, I'm one of those uh landowners that was affected by the new planning and zoning of the town. I have a twenty-one acre uh commercial lot just west of bluff, which they rezone residential. I followed all of the processes available and avenues with the town. And there is no appeal process, like the mayor said, their appeal is if you have a dispute, go to district court. That is their answer, so there is no process. Uh the the county has an appeals officer, Maggie McDonald is your appeals officer. He doesn't have a dog in the fight. Uh I think the county should step in and have your appeals officer look at the issue of him at both sides and then decide uh where things need to be before it goes further down the, you know, the vacation track.
Okay.
You with Luke?
Hmm. Um anybody from bluff like to weigh in on this before we move on to the next subject matter? If there be none, I
Like to uh raise what, in reference to the uh ownership of alleyways. Um is there such thing as alleyways right away?
So there are alleyways, there are alleyways.
In bluff?
In bluff, um this this language is a carryover, it was in the original. Um acknowledging that the county, um as we transitioned and um they took the property over, the town, uh they didn't take the alleyways with them and so on. I don't know why the history of this is there, um to me, I I literally picture me as an owner, I own this square property, but the access on the sides or the front is an alley and I don't own that. I just own the property and so the town just owns the property. And then we own the surrounding alleyways. Uh to me, it didn't make sense, one, um we would still have to insure alleyways in bluff. Um and we would count that as our property uh ownership and and value that accordingly. Um it just doesn't make sense for us to keep that ownership there, so give it to, let's work with with bluff and and see what we need to do to transfer that property to them so that we don't have alleyways. Uh and in bigger cities, you think of bigger cities, typically, the cities own the alleyways, that's where they they can run, you know, your your infrastructure, your um your pipes, things like that through, and so I don't know why this was there, it, and so I took it out so we can give it back to them.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, it's, it's if the town, the town is the town, we treat them as a town, we shouldn't have ownership of alleyways.
Full right of way.
They have full right of ways.
Until such time it's
Yeah.
Mac, I might have a, I might be able to shed a little light on that, there was there was a subdivision plat that was presented to the county and it's been a long, long time ago. For a subdivision in the bluff area that had these alleyways. And and it and it had, you know, it was accepted by the county, but it it's really um outdated at this point. The the prop- the property that was platted is very, very small and just a a ton of these alleyways and the county has actually sold some of those alleyways to people who bought some property inside of that and inside of that subdivision, the way I understand it. Kendall, are you familiar with this at all?
I'm a little bit.
But but um there are still some existing alleyway, alleyways in that subdivision. And I think what the, what Mac is saying, the county doesn't wanna own those alleyway properties inside of the city limits of bluff. So um I'm wondering if uh if the appropriate way to to do this, Kendall, is to offer those alleyway alleyways for sale to the adjacent property owners first. Instead of just transferring it to the town of bluff. Because certainly those property owners that are adjacent to those alleyways probably have more interest in that alleyway than maybe the the town may have it. We may be passing, we may be passing a burden to to the town to pass those alleyways onto the town. When is, if if we offered it a very reasonable or even below market price for those alleyways to the adjacent property owners, I thi- I think we need, I think we ought to look into that.
Yeah, we can.
I think we ought to look in to incorporating in our in our inter-local agreement some way to solve some of these zoning disputes. Maybe for a short period of time of one year or a two-year period. While the town of bluff is in the birthing stages of their town. And and certainly there's going to be some disputes that need to be uh looked at. That's why I was quite encouraged by the by the statement that the county and the town will confer if questions arise. And and like Mr. Tumay says, um maybe a somebody that's um a little less emotionally connected to the whole situation like A little less emotionally connected to the whole situation like Mac. Could be a a uh an appeals officer of some kind. Or or a mediation officer between the town. And the the property owner that feels like they've been. They they their their rights have been taken away, I I'm a. I I'm kind of a, I guess, a private property rights guy when it comes to to the constitution. I think people have the right to to own property and if they make the investment that. I think government needs to work with those people to maximize their ability to. To uh do what they want with their um with the property that they that they've purchased. I don't know, it it it's a big question in my mind whether we should, we should sign this. This interlocal with some of these these big deal things going on, Kendall.
We could hold off on that, I'd rec- that's one of the things I'd recommend is let me go back, modify and possibly add some of that language to her. We can reflect the situations like this, this transition period.
We'll at least have some dialogue with with the town of Bluff, they're trying, they're trying to get, they're trying to birth this baby called Town of Bluff.
I think uh I think that's one of the reason I asked that, is this a complete um ready to be signed an agreement? But um it's still open, I think that particular um negotiation should be in place. With the county and the town and uh and and how they want and best fit their community. That's the way it should be and then as a county, we shouldn't be sitting here and have them do what they wanna do. If they need some help, then we should lend a hand, we have an attorney, we have people to guide them through and we should be able to do that. And and good for the uh for the town of Bluff, what they're developing, I think every other little town should be looking for ways. To see how they could be best fit in their community and their town.
I think Kendall might have some advice.
So the the only thing that I would say is if, you know, Bruce was here when. When we made the deci- when we made the change, um Kenneth certainly remembers how it used to be. And we haven't had the experience of the system, but like with San Tito on the commission, but the county used to have. A land use appeal board that was the county committee and it had it had problems because. They they are elected officials and they're maybe not as unbiased as they should be and so the county for. Land use as well as for personnel issues went to an administrative law judge scenario. Where they con- where we contracted with the ALJ to come down and and handle those disputes for us. Um I will say that since we did that, um it has gone much smoother and better. Um and so I I understand the where Commissioner Adams is coming from, but from a liability perspective. If the county is jumping into the middle as a mediator and then our, let's say it's Mac. And then Mac's decision is appealed either by the town of Bluff or by the property owner, now the county is in the middle of it.
Right.
And so if if that if that discussion, you know, and and I'll discuss with Mac and and we can converse with the town of Bluff. But if they wanted to to make a contract where, you know, and part of the uh the agreement was that in the meantime before. Between now and getting their own ALJ or whatever system they want to have set up, that they want to. Structured in a way where they would take on the liability of the decision, we would simply loan our human being, our 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 person. To them, but that person would be acting on behalf of Bluff. That's a little less concerning, but if the ca- if this if the county were to bring liability upon itself for really no good. Reason, that that is a concern to me, but I will discuss that with with Mac and with the town of Bluff, that's just my concern from a liability perspective.
I think that's good advice, uh Kendall, I just think that there's a transition period from becoming. Um a county resident to becoming a a town resident. And and that there are going to be some things that arise and we ought to have a process. During the transition period that addresses some of the difficult questions and and I'm, I have no problem with that. An administrative judge being somewhat of a mediator or an appeals officer for a short period of time.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I just have a concern about, you know, and it can be structured and it can be worked out, but I just have a concern with. The county unnecessarily bringing liability upon itself.
And I think you're, I think you're absolutely right.
Mr. Henry Borne, may I be heard for a moment? I'd like to point out that first in doing the planning and zoning, Bluff complied with all the laws and. But more to the point of today's discussion on our agenda tonight is discussion and a and a vote on hiring David Everett. To do exactly what Kendall is talking about, so while we are a birthing town, we are way ahead of the game on a lot of these issues. The reason the interlocal agreement needed to be reviewed and modified is that during the moratorium period, the very end of our building moratorium. And I'm not saying there was any bad faith or anything about wrongdoing deliberately. But Samon County issued a building permit without conferring with the town of Bluff as required. Under the cu- the current interlocal agreement that we negotiated last December and January. So that building permit was issued when we asked to pull that building permit back. Because we had not reviewed it and planning and zoning was in place, that request was declined. Rather than to go down a point of litigating and fighting, the town of Bluff council said, okay. We're gonna let this building permit stand for the fourteen cabins, we don't agree with the process. We worked it out with the building permit department to be sure this would not repeat and happen again. And they're conferring with us, Commissioner Adams, just as you're suggesting. Just as I've been conferring on behalf of the council with Sam Cantrell and Betty Musselman, we're conferring, we're doing well. And by tonight, I am hopeful David Everett will be uh on board with us to do these things you're talking about. You know, the town isn't trying to step on anyone's rights, we're trying to provide an avenue and I appreciate Mister McDonald that you're willing to. Draw out a service, but um I think we're good on it and I'd be happy to talk with both of you at some point today. About how we negotiate through the rest of this, but we need to have an agreement that on the planning and zoning piece. That provision because that fell by the wayside during our uh building moratorium and I. Really don't want us to sit into the month of January, so that's where Bluff is.
Okay, Hammer?
Uh a couple of points, since the mayor is talking about my building permit. Um I applied for the building permit, it was issued after the moratorium was over. Uh and before the town of Bluff enacted its own planning and zoning, so jurisdiction was with the county. The county in the current um lo- in a local agreement, the building inspector has three days to notify Bluff. Of any building permits that come in, he did exactly that, within that three-day period, he sent all of my information to the town. Okay, so my building permit was valid under valid under the county's rules and regulations. The second thing with Mister David Everett, I don't know him very well, he may be the nicest man in the world, but I've been a business owner for twenty-five years. And unless they are hiring Jesus of Nazareth, they are gonna be biased because his paycheck will come from them. That's why I'm suggesting somebody who doesn't have a a dog in the fight, whether it's Mac or somebody else that the commission. Chooses, it needs to be somebody else, thank you.
Well, I think the mayor has expressed exactly what I was saying was public, was happening. Right now, there were, there were gonna be some things come up, everything isn't perfect. The interlocal isn't perfect, the county isn't perfect, town of Bluff isn't perfect. There's a time period, a transition period between being a county resident and a Bluff resident that I just think there's a. Period of time that we could maybe help solve some of the issues that come up. Either with a an administrative judge or some kind of a a negotiating process, I I I don't know.
Uh let me, no, it's Mister Sayer one, the last one so we can move on.
Thank you very much, my name is Jim Sayers, I'm a council member in Bluff and I'm also a resident in Bluff. And I think the best thing from my point of view that the county could do to help Bluff would be to go forward with this. Current interlocal agreement, I have been up here uh several times in the last several months. Thanking the county for the work of the interlocal agreement in in the belief that it was about to be signed. And each time it has uh fa- failed in some way. Um and we've negotiated and negotiated and negotiated and this has been uh eight months, something along those lines. Uh this is, this interlocal agreement is really strong, it's what Bluff would like. Um and I urge it to be accepted as both as a resident as an and as a council member. Everyone in Bluff was affected by the zoning, planning and zoning, everyone, and my 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 homes included. Um so I mean, this is what happens when a town is. And the reason that we incorporated was to, one of the main reasons was to uh planning and zoning, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim, okay, the next item on the agenda would be number four. Cooperative law enforcement agreement, Sheriff Tarkison, is he here? Yeah, give him a buzz, uh in the meanwhile, do we have the uh the other parties? From the San Juan County Historical Preservation Committee, Robert McPee.
Uh Robert will be here in just a moment.
Okay.
But he's on his way up, we came together.
So I guess the next item would be six, do we have the individuals for the proposed wind farm project, Tony Hall? Have a seat, sir, good man.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name's Mike Roaring, I'm standing in, excuse me, I got a frog on my throat.
You're not alone, just we're the same.
I'm standing in for Tony Hall, uh Mister Hall unable to be here today, so I'm a local landowner that's. Involved in the project, one of several and to meet our requirement. To the county, I'm just here to give a report. Uh to you, just to keep you in the loop so we know that what's going on, so that's. Simple, I won't take up much of your time. We're, as the landowners, we're wholeheartedly supporting this project, we've been into it. Several years now, the commission has been very good and backed us up on several occasions, we're grateful for that. Uh we've now completed our wildlife studies, uh the mill design. Has been completed and all our funding resources are in place. So in essence, uh we're just waiting for our final permit.
This is the wind farm here, right?
This is the new wind farm.
A new one.
It was prior, we've been, it it takes. Much to the chagrin of landowners, it takes quite a few, takes several years to get things going, so this has been in. The works for many years, uh so it's prior to y'all's uh coming onto the commission. So maybe I I'll give you just a brief thumbnail, this is a new wind farm. Uh but it's also, uh he would like to take it solar as well. The current. Permit that we're going under there's kinda simultaneously, but it'll be about a hundred and twenty megawatts. Originally, we were going for a hundred and eighty megawatts and some reason in the political venue, it got trimmed down. Uh Mister Hall would like it to go as high as twelve hundred megawatts. But we have to get our first step in first.
So it's a phased project?
It's phased project, so it'll go up in one of the phases, I don't know which one of the first two. Even the the hundred and twenties in phases.
So just, just I'm assuming that the uh the the solar and the wind project that's about what?
No, this is north of Monocello and east of Peter Springs, down that road. They probably have been working on it for six or seven years.
Yeah, it takes time.
Do you call it the Monocello Wind Project?
Yes.
That's the name of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Monocello Wind Project.
So Mister Hall's background, he has a lot of background, he has other farms, his incentive right now, to tell you the truth, is just to benefit. San Juan County, he wants, he's been very successful in his life and his motivation, he sees. The small area and and very good people here, but many of the next generations have to leave. And he would, he's he's wanting to give back, that's my personal take on him, that's my hat wearing rather than. What what I understand of him, he's he's an individual, this isn't a big corporation or anybody else, he's not a developer. Is in the meaning, he's not gonna come on in and sell it off and things like that, he wants to own it, he wants to retain the jobs here.
Mike, do you have, uh do you have a need or have you secured any power purchase agreements?
The the power purchase agreements are in place, they're they're active. And and they've been maintained recently and we're assured that our power purchase agreement is. For the current pricing for what he negotiated is in place, so that's a very important thing for this whole.
And the county has issued a special use, conditional use permit for this project uh a long time ago. And have have indicated to them that we're ready to, for them to go through the billing permit process. And get the farm built, we've written support letters to some of the litigation they've been involved in and.
We've already got our building permit, Bruce, that's in place.
Have you paid for it?
That's, no, we, it was, it was designed and I think you helped us work that out, so when we come in, the price is already been set. The way I understand it, it's in set, the building permitted, it was, but we have that in place and and.
You just need to pay for them and then you can go to work, right?
It takes so long to go through and you have to put a tremendous amount of money just to get to this point.
Federal land, it just takes thirty years to get a permit to.
The local people, myself and you all, I'm sure included, bureaucracy takes time. And we just wanna, my, I just wanna flip a switch and let's go to work, but it doesn't work that way, I I've learned that a lot, but.
So the, if you do a hundred and twenty-eight megawatts to start with, I think the the. Latigo farm is about the same size, about a hundred and.
I think they're eighty, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, they just stated, so I think they're, they're taxed back to the county and they're. Said to assess or whatever it is is, starts out and it declines with depreciation, but I think it starts out near a million dollars. To the county tax coppers, so these guys' project would be over a million dollars to begin with. To the ta- to the tax coppers of the county.
You have to get your foot in the door first and that's what, that's what we're trying to do, once we get that going, he's, he's ready to continue and move on.
Will you access the the power at the Pinto substation then or are you, do you have to build a new one?
He will build a new one, but of course it'll end up in Pinto, I I'm thinking, I don't know which, I don't know which way the the water runs. Electrons run, but I, he'll he'll build a new substation.
I know the the other one had to bring a. Uh and again, I don't know, like AC or DC power in from the wind had to be. Gone through the transformer to to become the right kind of power that could go out on the transmission line.
That's right.
But.
He's got all that worked out and and if if you have questions, those are technical issues, I can't answer those. But he can answer all of those questions, is more than willing to help you anytime he needs.
Teach you in school the difference between AC and DC?
You know, my first teacher, I lost a lot of marbles to him, I know that. The county has it, the county has it, it's just northeast of town, kinda along the rim out there.
Mac, you can probably get that from the building department, the map.
We're happy to send it to you, the design layout is a little bit. The design layout is a little bit different. One of the benefits of being so slow, I guess, in the bureaucracy of things is that the efficiency of mills have increased a lot. So, that's the only silver lining that I know that has been by waiting is that, that you can, there's more efficiency designed in now and, and for also high elevation. Believe it or not, Monticello is a very, uh, moderate wind.
Windy city.
It, it, there's barely enough, there's barely enough here to run the windmills.
All right.
Anyway, so I'm, I'm just trying to fill in that required. Come to see the Commissioners and fill you in an update and we're grateful for your support that you, that the county's given us in the past and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
I would recommend that the county give Mike a verbal commitment of being supportive of the project and working within continued what we've done in the past, Commissioner.
We will get to that in time. Willie was going to ask you if it was a grade A or grade B PCB field transformer, but I guess we're not going to get that answer then.
They'll be eco-friendly.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Jason?
Sorry I was late. Vehicle's in the shop, so I ran right over here. Hopefully I got my...
Oh, okay, well?
So, I just have a, um, a cooperative law enforcement agreement between the San Juan County and the Forest Service, US Forest Service. We signed it last year and it's just something we have to do every year. And so, they would like your signature again. And this is just to reimburse us for, uh, hours and then equipment for a total of five thousand dollars is what they give us on...
Forest Service paying you?
Yeah.
Will that be handled during our commission open meeting or, or can we do this now?
We could do that now and then ratify it in our, our open meeting if you want to.
That sounds good. Commissioners? Do I have a motion? Motion Commissioner Adams, do I have a second? Going one?
Yeah.
Uh, second by Commissioner Gray Eyes, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, bring this back so we can ratify it and be for the record.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Good job, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, number five. Uh, it'd be Robert.
Can I do that? I'm the chairman.
Yes, yes. If you have the knowledge to do that, give us the, the insight.
Okay, uh, San Juan County Historical Commission has, uh, been in place for a number of years. We're the ones that put out the Blue Mountain Shadows. And, uh, we had a representative, Heather Young, was here in, uh, July, I think, talking to you about that. Uh, we are working on a project with the Ojito Trading Post right now. And, uh, their, the CLGs, uh, has some funds that we can use, uh, for the cleanup down there. But before we can get that, we have to get a, an approval from the Commissioners. Uh, in the document that you have, there is, uh, an addendum dated November of this year. And, uh, it's basically as guidelines that we're expected to follow. If y'all can support that, uh, addendum, uh, and then accept our, the ordinance and the, uh, uh, constitution we can go forward and we can start that project. So, basically, we're just asking for a, an approval on something that's been in place for a long time.
Good, good. Any other questions, Commissioners?
I'm very familiar with the good work that the Historical Commission does and, um, it's not because they are becoming multimillionaires. It's a labor of love for the county and for the history of the county. And we'll, we'll actually have to address this in our, our, uh, commission meeting to make, to proceed forward. But he's, he's given a, a very good report and they do a, a wonderful job there. I don't know if you've read the Blue Mountain Shadows in the past, but it's, it's an amazing history of historical record of San Juan County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Blue Mountain?
Blue Mountain Shadows.
Stop by Clark and pick up one of the magazines. That's where they have all the drugstores.
Who's, who's all on there?
We have...
Committee or commission?
I'm the chair, uh, and Brenda Whitehorse, the Brenda that was at the, uh...
Anna Porting School?
At, yeah, the Anna Porting School. She's the vice chair. Uh, Don Moes, uh, from Monument Valley is on there. Uh, I'm on there. Bob McPherson is on there. Winston Hurst is on there. Heather Young. And, uh, we also have, uh, uh, I think that's probably about it, but, yeah. We have adjunct people that have a special interest that will come in and work for a little bit.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to sneak in. I, I pardon this group. You guys started early today.
Hi, my name's Bob McPherson. I know you, Kenneth and Willie and Bruce. Uh, I'm, I'm on this committee also and we have a number of projects that we're working on. And I wanted to make you aware of one that I'm working on right now. And in fact, I spoke, uh, up in Salt Lake last Tuesday at the legislature to get funding for this. Um, there's a thing that comes with this committee renewal and that is we've become available for what's called CLG funds, which is certified local government funds. And those funds can be used for things of historic preservation, to try to fix things and preserve them and so forth. And I've got a project right now that I'm working on. It's the old J O Trading Post. I've gotten, in fact, I brought this for you. Uh, I have a resolution from the chapter and also from the Navajo Nation Historic Preservation Department. And, uh, this is answering some of the questions. I won't go into a lot of detail because I know you got a full agenda. But what this is about is, uh, the Ojito Trading Post built nineteen twenty-one. Uh, right now, it's just falling apart and no one is making any effort to preserve it. Uh, I'm going after funding, and when I say I, as a representative of the San Juan County Historical Commission, uh, to, uh, get the funding necessary to not only preserve the building, to make it a really nice place, but also to use it as an economic exciter for the Ojito community. Uh, the, the idea that it'll be run and operated and promote people, uh, things for the people in the Ojito community. So, this is just one aspect of the San Juan County Historical Commission. But with your approval, if we get approved to do this, then, uh, to, to continue the organization of the San Juan County Historical Commission, then we become eligible for those funds. Those funds are issued from the, from the state, uh, to the county and then from the county to the Historical Commission. So, as you consider whether or not you'd like to see this renewed, uh, you know, it, it has got a lot of benefit a, all the way around. And this is the project that, that we're working on right now. So, do you...
The, uh, interesting part is associated story that the traders to the Navajo.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, a book that family came through, I guess, from the east to California and then they decided to come back this way.
Yeah, the Wetherell family.
Right.
John and Louise Wetherell.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And they came through, uh, uh, Lee's Ferry, Gap, Tubus City, uh, Tonaliya area. And they buried, uh, some of their landings in Tonaliya for the state. We don't know where it is.
Mm-hmm.
It's a treasure box. So...
Well, nineteen oh, from nineteen oh six, from nineteen oh six to nineteen oh seven, they ran a trading post right there in Ojito.
All that story has to be reconnected.
Yeah.
And they built that. The, uh, and back in nineteen thirties, early thirties, the first trading post was built for, by one of the sons up on Payute Mesa.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, Ben Wetherell.
That was...
That was Ben, Ben Wetherell, yeah.
Later to, to Navajo Mountains. So, there's a whole history on it. And Rainbow Loud, uh, mule, mule train, mule ride. Those are associated stories.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, okay, so you see we've got history that needs to be taken care of.
Yeah. You gotta add to your history. Pre-history.
Yeah.
The trading post.
Great. Yeah, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Spanish Valley update, Jerry McNeely.
Names of the boards and so forth.
Um, Bob McPherson.
Yeah.
Oh, you want us to write it down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Come on up, Jerry.
I'm coming. I'm coming. Willie, it's always a pleasure.
That's Eve.
Bruce, you're a little drunk this morning. Okay, boys, we'll make it nice and short today, okay?
How's your car doing?
Good. I got a show you need to go watch.
You need to tell these people that, uh, that Commissioner Maryboy is not, he's not, um, a tree hugger. He's a racer and a nitrous burner.
And that's why, that's why I'm telling, that's why I'm telling Maryboy that there's a theater, there's a movie that you need to go see called Ford versus Fiori.
Oh, I, yeah.
And it is one of the greatest movies you're ever going to see if you're a car bug, Kenneth. And it's in Moab right now.
Hey, Jerry.
Okay. Uh, I'll just start with my meeting, so you want me to go fast?
Mm-hmm. You only got two minutes.
Yeah. Okay, meetings, I went to, I went to OJ, O, AOG for Bruce in, it was in Price, Utah. And everything went well. It started eleven-thirty. I got out of there at four o'clock, so it's quite a trip when you do it. And it's really quite a trip when Bruce has to do it from here. But it's a very important meeting and everything went really good, so there's no problems going on there, so. And that's, they have mayors and commissioners from each four counties go to that. So, it's very important that somebody shows up for that. Uh, okay, we're just doing the, well, San Juan Water and Sewer is going good. The hookups are going good. We get our wa, our road straightened out. Where I'm getting, uh, my phone calls are a little more positive than they was. Uh, we had a water and sewer meeting that went really good with San Juan Water and Sewer. And so, all that is going very, very good right now, other than the weather kicking in and causing little problems and stuff like that. Uh, I went to Grand Water and Sewer meeting. Everything's going good there. They're having a little, they know they built a new water tank themselves and they're having some problems with that. It's leaking and stuff, so that'll be handled by that. We did finally have a children's justice meeting, uh, the other day, which I just got, that was just a kind of a mini meeting because they had new, uh, new managers have turned over. So, this is just kind of a heads up on what they plan, what they need and what it's all about. And I talked about it, that Children's Justice Center goes along with the Christmas Box House. And, uh, we work here with, uh, it also covers San Juan area. I represent you guys to the Christmas Box House. You'll see the board members on there. Even, uh, the Sheriff Tarkison is on there. However, he was not at the meeting, I might add. I'm going to crucify him when I get a hold to him. And, uh, it's very important that everybody be, uh, is at this meeting. One time back when I was on the county council in Grand County, they tried to take the justice court away and the Christmas box away and do away with it. And we had a big battle. We had Senator Hatch come down. We had Senator Dimitrić come down and the state come down and was able to save it. It's a very important, it's a very important piece of, uh, citizen, uh, stuff, so. And so, we've been fighting for it and now it's, we put them together. It works really good and everything is going very, very nice.
Another old estimate.
This, this is, this is very important, this housing, this children's justice, okay? Housing Authority, I got one of those meetings coming up this coming Thursday. I'll be going to that. So, that puts us down to SITLA. SITLA has, has no changes. They're still doing the same thing, doing a little easement stuff here and there and kind of hanging out in limbo. So, SITLA had nothing to say to me. And I go there two, one, one or two times a week and so they're not on, on board. Uh, BL, I went to BLM both times this week. Uh, BLM and Wilton Arch is still the same. They're still working on it, but it hasn't taken place. Uh, in the industrial site that I brought up, I did get some maps so Willie would know where we're talking about. And, uh, the industrial site is actually on this end and this is one ninety-one over here. They've also put in for some APD, deep, APDs right here. But they're liable not to take place due to the fact that the industrial site itself is looking to slow down, maybe even stop production of the oil wells. And that, and that's why I was told to bring it up because they have, the people that took it over after it was closed down and, and did away with are kind of struggling right now. But they did get some, uh, big flaring, uh, what would you call it, instrumentation done so that when their oil comes up, it has gas with it and they can flare off the gas. And it's pretty close to the road, like three miles, two miles at the most, at the least. And so, when they're flaring off this gas, they want the people to know that that's what it is. It ain't for the, the grass burning or anything that they actually are, just because this is a new flaring outfit. It's not go, doesn't go with where the old industrial site is. This will be about three miles south and about two miles west of where the old industrial site is. And that's, and they want people, be aware that when they do flare that off, that's what that is.
Is that in Lisbon Valley?
What, Matt?
Is it in Lisbon Valley?
Yeah, it's all in Lisbon.
Just wanted to make sure you're...
Yeah, it's...
Are oriented.
Yeah, and it's in the map. I didn't give you them out there. I'm sorry about that, Matt.
Oh, no, you're totally...
No, I, you gotta have...
I was making sure for the record, people knew that.
I mean, you can see the BLM doesn't...
It was Lisbon Valley industrial site. Not over there blending or something.
We thought this was going to be a big deal and then it's kind of, and what, what the BLM said, what happened was the people they were working with piping their oil to New Mexico, they actually went out of business. So, now they're kind of hanging in there, looking for either new people to sell their product to and vice versa. And they might actually even shut down also. But right now, they're going to be doing some pumping and, and evidently, I was out there one day when they were working on their flaring stations and it's a pretty fancy thing. If you haven't seen it, you need to go look at it. It's about three miles off of I- one ninety-one where that industrial site sign is. And it's, uh, that's where the flaring will be. And I think they got three setups for flaring, so that's what they'll do. And they want everybody to also know and don't get too excited. Uh, let's see, pre-approved, not help. It'll be flaring. And the Forest Service, as you know, they, they're being, Mike Dean is the longer, so they're kind of up in the air too. In fact, I haven't even seen, Brian, uh, is going to be running it temporarily. He has put in for the position, but he, but, so what I did was, the last time I was here, I gave you the Geyser Pass Road, Willie, when I was talking about what it was. So, I got some maps from the Forest Service, so at least you guys can look at it and see what they're doing. They're not the greatest maps in the world. I'm hoping they get better maps when, after they've taken out all the little errors that, uh, we was able to show what they could do. But it has enough to show you what they, what they really are doing. And that's why I do what I do. And that's why I do what I do, uh, keep things going. And this'll just help you out a little bit, but I haven't got to talk to uh, to meet with Brian to talk, cause he, he's either going here or there, I have talked to the Rangers. And uh, right now, they're just kinda sitting in limbo, waiting to see how they're gonna handle things. And uh, you know, and then we did the, the Jim Nidel, and we got the Jim Nidel easement settled. And now they want another easement where he, what runs his water line down, which there's never, so we're gonna be fighting over that before, during the spring, when we can get up there and take a look at it. So we'll be doing that and working on that quite, quite hard, to make sure the easements work. Uh, oh, and I did get to talk, when I went to the Forest Service, I talked to this, they have a guy that measures snow, and that's all he does is measure the snow, and so theoretically, you have approximately three feet on the ball, of bowels for total depth, and we have about four feet on the wasow, but at the top of what's at the, this map, uh, Geyser Pass, that's the high, high point of the pass, and so they, that's where they have their measuring station. And this guy goes there all the time during the winter and measures snow, so we have access to, I have access to him all the time, cause he's out.
You know what the water content is?
He di- he said, well, he could say there wasn't enough for water content, but he did say there was a layer in the middle of everything that was nothing but crystallized, was no water whatsoever. He did say that on, and that's on both mountains. Now, when that happened in between, I could, cause one time we had five feet at Geyser, but it's all sunk down. But he says in between, like, let's say where, if you knew where the recreation site is in Geyser Pass, that's probably
Mm-hmm.
four thousand feet in elevation, there's a layer of crystallized snow in there that have nothing. And they're worried about what it does to the recreational, cause they're getting ready to shut the road off, and then it'll be strictly, they'll sweep it. And then it'll be recreation from then on, snowmobiles, snowshoes, and all that kinda stuff. Other than that, uh, everything's going fairly good in Moab. Uh, like I said, the water and sewer is finally coming around. Uh, when I do get a phone call, it's not like it was before, I'm getting a lot of phone calls, wondering now, wanting to know when that, when they're gonna be hooked up and how long it will take and what they got to do and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
So it is progressing.
Willie wants to know how fishing is over Ken's Lake.
Ken's Lake is frozen, no fishing.
How, how thick?
About that thick, just enough where it'd be scary. When it gets good ice fishing and it's colder than hell, Willie, I'm gonna call you and we're gonna meet, and we're gonna go ice fishing. You're gonna catch a brown about this long. Well, maybe this long. You know.
It's a fish story, Willie.
But yeah, there is big, I'm telling, I'm not lying to you, Willie, there is big fish in Ken's Lake, I guarantee it.
Big bite.
And you're gonna have to come down.
Well, thank you, Jerry.
That's my report for right now.
Good report.
You need me, call me back if you need me, where to find me, if you come down, get a hold to me, and I'll take you around and show you all the
I appreciate it.
The ifs, ands, and buts.
Absolutely.
Cause there's lots of those.
The ifs and ands.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you, Nick.
Good morning, I'll try to be quick. Couple of weeks ago, Mac and I attended a meeting with the Lisbon Valley Copper Mine, where they presented a new idea they've got to recover copper, and it's called N-CI-T-U recovery, which is drilling an injection well, and then collecting the solution that comes up in collection wells, four collection wells roughly around each injection well. And that would be south and southeast of the current mining operation. It's more or less, as I understood, it's kind of experimental for this area, they don't know if it'll be successful, but they're trying to get permitting for it, and they've been doing testing and, and uh, working on that, and it would supposedly make recovery of copper more economical at a lower price per pound of copper, as opposed to open pit mining. But as I understand it, the open pit mining would continue along with the N-CI-T-U recovery, if that gets going, at least for a while. There were some landowners there, uh, who have grazing permits in the area, they were concerned about oh, grazing impacts with the current open pit mining situation in the stockpiles that are left in place for quite a while. They also had concerns with a new proposal as to what that may do to groundwater in that area, which they are dependent on. This was not an open public meeting, it was more targeted to the affected parties, and once the permits get more uh finalized, BLM will initiate a NEPA process, and then there will be more open public meetings with this whole affair. And uh, on oil and gas leasing, recently BLM suspended some of the leases that had been issued, including some in this area, and this was because of a, of a court case in Wyoming, as well as a recent lawsuit filed in Utah on oil and gas leasing, basically stating that BLM's NEPA analysis, analyses were inadequate. So they pulled these leases back, suspended, suspended them, pending additional climate analysis on the, in the NEPA documents. But the uh, oil and gas lease sale, I think it was December tenth, went ahead, and I believe all the parcels that were put up for sale in San Juan County sold. Then, on another BLM matter, the Hatch Point Road project, which was a proposal of a few years ago, probably twenty fifteen, it was to repave the existing paved roads out to the Needles Overlook, as well as pave the gravel part of the road that goes to the Anticline Overlook. The decision on that was signed in February of twenty eighteen, and there was an appeal filed on it, so BLM had pulled back any action on that, even though that decision was made in full force and effect, so that it could be implemented immediately regardless of an appeal, but they're still holding back on that. However, there are what BLM calls deferred maintenance funding in uh, in Utah, BLM, and they're considering possibly using some of that deferred maintenance funding to patch the existing paved road from the Needles Overlook back to Highway one ninety-one. As I say, that's just a consideration right now, and that would not be affected by the appeal. So it's basically a patching uh, affair, now that, the county roads that would be, they're not county roads, although they're within the county, the Needles section back to the highway is not a county claimed RS two four seven seven road. The section from the Y, the road forks there, to the Anticline Overlook is an RS two four seven seven road claim. And that is the gravelled section that is under appeal. But the segment where they would do the maintenance on the existing pavement is not a two four seven seven county claim. Then on the Bergeers Management Plan, the uh, Section one oh six process for cultural and historic resources, uh, an update on that. Earlier, BLM and the Forest Service had determined that that plan would have no adverse effect on cultural properties. And the State of Utah State Historic Preservation Office concurred with that finding. Well, so, some of the uh, non-government organizations who were also consulting parties with the one oh six process objected to that finding. So that instituted, instituted a review by the Advisory Council of Historic Preservation. BLM asked them, BLM asked them to review the process that BLM and the Forest Service had used and determine if there were errors in the process. Well, that review by the Advisory Council has been completed, and the Advisory Council concluded that that finding of no adverse impact is reasonable and is adequately supported. And there are two letters in your packet, one uh, from the Advisory Council of December twelfth, twenty nineteen, which basically states some of that. And then the BLM and the Forest Service have reaffirmed that initial finding of no adverse effect, based on the recent Advisory Council review. And that letter from BLM is dated December thirteenth of this year, and that's also in your packet if you want more information on that. And that's all I have for you this morning.
Thank you very much, Nick.
Thank you, sir.
Good report. Okay. Folks, I'm gonna allow you to go and visit the little boys in the little girl's room, and as soon as you're back, we will get the commissioner meeting underway. Go shake a leg, or spit outside, or smoke or something.
We have no agendas.
No agenda? Can somebody provide an agenda to the uh, to the front desk, please, the front door, please? It's online, yeah, it should be online.
Just wanted to say happy holidays.
Oh.
And spread my brand. Happy holidays.
Where's the?
Thank you guys for helping me.
Mm-hmm.
Do you wash it?
Oh, yeah, sorry, it's not full.
Can that go?
It needs to be washed, I would rinse it out.
I don't, I don't matter.
But they've been sitting on a shelf.
I like all of them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know exactly, so this is the reason why I said this, this is not a done deal yet, we're discussing. So along the way, the county and the town took me together, and that's when we started wanting to build it out, and then we approved it. Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm aware of, okay. You tell the party, you tell Amherst that I'm supporting you on the power. And I did mention that a few times
Okay.
on the, on the discussion here.
Hey, shut it. Yeah, eh.
Yeah, eh, Ben.
Eh, Hastehi. Belashne, do, oh, one of the chapter that do report next, eh. The da, we, you know, don't get me by saying, eh, then, now, who nation do, hey, the, eh, eh. At then, do, 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 you know. Oh. Now, who nation, then?
Well, we're supposed to be ready to sign those uh, agreements next month, January, I think.
Hmm. Eh, ad, Zashen, that buta teed, nechud. Niche, eh, now, who nation, eh, at, Saniket, no, Ben, eh, na, it's, I G A G, intergovernmental agreement, to sign their letter. I do MOU that to sign their letter, at, eh, that to sign their, eh, I do she, eh, that buta teed, nechud. Best, eh, Ben, that, yeah, Ben, man, eh, can she, cause I, she, but, we, yeah, we, 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 eh, eh.
Agreement was to go, eh, this, this.
Oh, oh, I, she, but, we, yeah, do, eh, so, eh, Ben, eh, do, eh.
Okay, well.
I don't, I, oh, oh, shoot, eh, eh.
Eh, eh, um, eh, she, oh, you, eh, eh.
You da, this, this, now, who, eh, eh, you da, this, this, and that, eh. Now, he's kind of, that she, eh, eh, eh.
Talk to them.
See that movie, you know, you see those movies, that Shelby Mustangs?
Yeah.
It goes two hundred and twenty plus miles and a quarter, seven thousand RPM, and they show you all that, especially when the wheels get hot, burning off.
What keep it into it?
Huh?
What keep it into it?
It's that Cleveland that they put together for Shelby, it's all about the Shelby.
Yeah, 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 it's a Kayauri motor.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is.
They built it, and they built, and then he had to win the race, and then he got all the funding he wanted to continue on with the Shelby Mustang, and that's how he did it. It's a really interesting show.
I gotta see that.
And so one, the three Shelby Mustangs come in first, could either be pretty tall at one time.
Yeah.
And Ferrari and these.
They, they were left in the dust, I, I saw that, I, I read about it, and I've been curious about it, and I tried to watch the movie.
Shows you all the work they did, the cars, it shows the wheels getting hot and burning off.
Yeah.
The guy's driving, and then the work's supposed to go over five thousand RPM, and the guy that won the, the winner, he's raised, he pushed it to seven thousand.
I'm putting a four fifty-four small block Ford together right now.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, it's a three oh two block with the windows parked, and it's gonna be a four fifty-four.
Yeah, and what do you put it in?
I got a truck that I'm putting it in, I got a, I'm expecting at least about maybe seven hundred and eighty horses
Yeah.
and about five hundred shot of nitrous oxide, so I should be in pretty good condition.
That's why I ask.
Without using too much RPM.
Yeah. That's why I ask. Just goes that RPM thing going, and they're making, showing, they're making, getting this assignment, you never go seven thousand, that even just.
Yeah.
Talking to the car, you know, so more amazing, little boy, those guys, it's a very intense movie.
Yeah. Alright.
I'm just giving you a heads up, buddy.
Yeah.
I mean, talk, uh.
Good morning, folks. It is uh, eleven twenty-one, and before I call the meeting to order, please, could you uh, put your phones on vibrate and uh, either that or shut them off? We have a lengthy discussion on some items this morning, and hoping that we would fly by the main agenda. And don't make southern moves or southern statements, uh, Bruce and I are on heavy medications, so uh, please be aware. And um, at this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order, and before I do that, I, I tend to sometime forget, but uh, I'd like to ask a, uh, one of the audiences to participate in helping us out with the implication. If not, um, we'd like to ask for a moment of silence, if you could, in any way, we would, we would appreciate it. If there's none, I'm gonna ask Bruce to dent, I mean, Willie to dent circle around circles for us, but, Amherst, thank you. Parashakma, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, commissioners, uh, the minutes, uh, I believe that you, we all have time to reviewed it, and I need to establish motion, motion by Gray Eyes to approve the amendments. Second by Commissioner Adams, are there any questions or comment on it, there be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, coming down to the sun's comments, to the commission, uh.
We only have three.
We only have three, okay, well, I think we are starting to learn the process, so uh, before that, um, the rules of how we do this, uh, Mac?
Okay, before we do that, I'm sure we also need to, I just pointed order on here, we need to make sure that we modify the agenda as well on there, and so. Um, if you wanna go over the modification that John David has for that, and then I can address the comment period and the rules for those.
Uh, commissioners, I appreciate that, Mr. McDonald, um, we just barely voted on the, on the um, the agenda as is. According to the Robert Rules of Order, we recall the vote, so that way we can add the modification and then approve the agenda as is. Or do we say the hell with it and just move on, and what we do with it, and how we organize things together?
So what do we need to add on?
So, um, sorry. So number three, uh, it's, I think it states that there is a public hearing for, on the twenty twenty budget, is that right? I have the amended one.
Yeah.
Um, so we need to change that to public hearing on adjustments to the twenty nineteen general fund and related budgets, and then below that, add a number four, um, to approve the final twenty nineteen budget adjustments, and then just go from there. And then just go from there.
I'll make that motion, that we make those adjustments to our agenda.
Mr. Gray Eyes, Commissioner Gray Eyes?
Yes, I approve.
Commissioner Gray Eyes, seconds the motion, again, just for the record, our attorney, uh, Kendall, we just barely voted on the agenda as is. A yea and a nay, and all three, we all voted on it. And now we're adding some item on the agenda, normally according to Robert Rules of Order, you add those modifications and then vote on it because it's for the record.
So I think, I think, my, my understanding from, uh, from talking to Mac yesterday, I think it was advertised this way, it just wasn't on the, your agenda here that way. Correct, Mac?
Yes, and so that's, I appreciate you pointing that out, is, so we did, um, whenever it comes, the question of Open Meetings Act, we did follow that, this was notified in the paper. Um, and, but we didn't add it to the agenda, and so we're just making that modification, so it was notified.
With that clarification, determine acknowledges the motion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, we have some items that's added onto the agenda. So we have a working item, and, uh, now we will proceed into citizens' comment, we have three, so as we were.
So with the rules, um, and to note with the agenda, um, if you're here for one of the public hearing items on here, that allows you that public hearing opportunity for that individual agenda item. Uh, so if you wanna speak specifically to that agenda item, uh, you're more than welcome to wait for that public hearing to be open, and then we'll receive your comments for that agenda item. If you're wanting to make comments just in general for items that aren't necessarily on the agenda, uh, then that's the public comment period which we're having now. We're gonna require everybody, uh, we'll give you a three-minute, um, time clock to, um, state your intent or whatever you're wanting the commission to hear. Uh, again, this isn't a, a dialogue opportunity with the commission, this is just to hear your comments during that public comment period, and so, uh, as always, we ask you to be respectful, be mindful of the audience. Uh, audience members, as you're hearing people speak, um, please refrain from jeering or applause, um, things like that, just be respectful for those, uh, people that are speaking during, uh, the public comment period or, uh, the public hearing, um, periods. Uh, we have asked you to sign up, um, if you're wanting to address the, the public comment period, um, please sign in. Uh, it just makes it easier for us to, to follow in an orderly fashion through the signups. Um, with that, Commissioner, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much, and we will proceed, before we jump into our public comments, Commissioner, be aware that the, the number fourteen commissioner's report has changed because we have two items that's on the agenda. So now our, uh, our commission report is under item sixteen. Thank you very much, okay, the first one, to, uh.
Steve Pearson?
Steve Pearson.
Jim Sayers on deck.
Good morning, Steve.
Uh, I'm just wondering what's gonna, what's going on with our roads down on the reservation. And the reason I'm concerned right now is some of the roads has got moisture in them to where if you would get something out there, they could do some good. Before, they did go out there, but all they did is fill it all a pothole full of blow sand, and the wind from the trucks going by. Emptied them out. Nothing has ever been accomplished out there. I started this in April, and following it, so far I have seen nothing out there, nothing. And as for our addresses, it's the same thing. If somebody wants to take your physical address away from you so you wouldn't have nobody deliver any packages to you, I know that don't matter to you guys, you live where they do deliver, you live on roads, railroads, and you have a physical address. And the whole Utah corridor of the reservation is represented by the two people sitting right here. And I think that you guys should take care of your southern end of this county before you even think about going north or anywhere else, that's where you was elected to take care of. I'm very disappointed in you. I haven't seen no representation whatsoever down there from either one of you.
Hmm.
And, uh, I mean, it's still, the county is still carrying all the liability on the school buses, everything else. Responsible for insurance on them, maintenance, and they don't have any roads. No, no school bus roads out there at all. Even the paved roads are going bad. Anything on the reservation, on the Utah corridor, Utah side of it, and no representation, no work done. You can't just knock on doors, Kenneth, you gotta knock them down. You gotta knock them down, get their attention. That's what you are elected to do. Mr. Gray Eyes, you're the other half of it. I don't need three minutes to tell you that. Thank you.
Jim Sayers?
Jim Sayers.
Amr Tumey on deck?
Amr be standing by.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Mary, Mary Boy.
Before you, uh, let me respond to the questions. I don't know why, um, people would be singling out certain people to, um, say things, rural addresses have been out there for so many months now. And almost every one of the hogons and homes have numbers now, they have addresses, before there was none. And now the roads are being under, uh, construction, and the agreement between the San Juan County and the nation has not taken place. And I've been telling the chapters, I've been telling the people, I don't know why, uh, there's some of us that don't seem to understand what's going on. So for the record, all the information is out there, people are aware of what's going on. So with that, thank you very much, and back to you, Jim.
Thank you, Commissioner Mary Boy, Commissioner Gray Eyes. Um, I just want to make a comment about the interlocal agreement between the county and Bluff Town, Town of Bluff. That, uh, first, there's no reason why the interlocal agreement should not be signed. Um, Bluff will have an appeals officer at the conclusion of the council meeting scheduled for six PM this evening. The interlocal agreement is between the Town of Bluff and the county, and it's not between the county or town and any individuals, it's between the two of us. Um, if the turning over the alleys is an issue, or these easements in Cottonwood addition, uh, this can be negotiated in an amendment to the interlocal agreement, um, at any time, uh, according to the agreement itself. So this is, this is kind of a minor, uh, point, I think, the, the alleys, uh, that were discussed. Actually, I requested to have one of those alleys turned over to, or, uh, I, I requested to purchase one of those alleys about twenty years ago, uh, several times in, in writing to the county, and never got any response, so I just forgot about it, but I've got a couple of those alleys that buy, that cut right through my property, so, uh, there, there aren't any utilities on, in most of those alleys, so, um, this is, this is not a large, I don't think this should be a large issue, this can be subject to amendment. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Amr Tumey?
Amr? Tumey?
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Yat, eh, Ben?
Oh.
Um, for the record, my name is Amr Tumey, um, I am the owner of Desert Roses Resort and Duke's Restaurant in Bluff. Uh, I employ an average of forty-five people during the season, ninety-five percent of my employees are natives. I am the largest tax collector of TRT and resort tax in Bluff. Uh, I would like to voice my opposition to the Bluff interlocal agreement, and here are the reasons. Number one, the county is almost broke. I recently attended the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing. My takeaway from that hearing, um, not to be Captain Obvious, but, uh, the county is almost broke. Uh, most people know that the first rule of business is location, 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 and I think each, each one of you gentlemen can teach me a thing or two about business and life. However, what's more important than the, than the location in business and in life is if you are in a hole, stop digging. Number two, I think the commission should allow all cities in the county to be independent and not spoon-feed them for years on end. Three, if Bluff cannot provide the services outlined in the agreement, it had no business incorporating to begin with. It was a sham feasibility study that led to the incorporation. Four, the only reason Bluff incorporated is to get out from under the control of the county. They do not like this commission, they didn't like the previous commission, and I hate to break it to you, gentlemen, but they just want your money. Five, Bluff is fostering an anti-business environment by severely, severely limiting available land and commercial, for commercial development, limiting business expansion, and imposing unreasonable restrictions on business operations. This is insane since businesses provide the tax revenue for them to run the town. This also adversely affects the ta, the tax revenue to the county. So they are hit new in the pocketbook, and then they come to you for a handout. This is the same as opposing mineral explorations, which affects C I B income, then they go to the C I B for a handout. Number six, tonight, as they said, Bluff will adopt ex, exterior lighting dark side, dark sky, uh, which will cost me over a hundred thousand dollars to comply with. The town will enforce this ordinance in a civil action by seeking an injunctive relief and damages in the amount of three hundred dollars per day for non-compliance. This is fifteen thousand dollars per month. The ordinance also allows other property owners to sue us for damages in the same amount as the town. This will result in a quagmire of lawsuits, and they're gonna use your court system to do it. Number seven, it gives me no pleasure to be at odds with my neighbors, it's against everything I believe in, but I feel like I've been singled out by the Bluff Town Council. I have given them every opportunity to do the right thing, but I feel like I'm being discriminated against. I can't help but be in brown, can you? One last thing, if you allow me, commissioners, you say you wanna help, well, this is the moment, this is where the rubber meets the road. Bluff local government, um, has run amok and needs to be reeled in, they either are unable or unwilling to do it. Martin Luther King, and I'll finish with this, Martin Luther King Junior said, "The ultimate measure of a man," and if he was alive today, he would say, "A man or a woman." Well, the ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of confer, uh, conflict and controversy. I believe that you guys will do the right thing, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, uh, for all your, uh, public comments. It will be considered and, uh, also, um, recognized. At this point in time, we will be advancing on to the, um, uh, public hearing, commissioners. Item number three, public hearing on two thousand two San Juan County General Fund and Related Budget. So this means that we're gonna have to.
Are we gonna do that one before we do the two thousand nineteen adjustments?
Let's see, so you're, you should be, the way you change things, this one should be the public hearing on the two thousand nineteen adjustments. And so you need to make a motion to enter into the public hearing.
Make a motion to go into public hearing?
Motion to go into public hearing, do I have a second?
Okay, second.
A second by Commissioner Gray Eyes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, John?
Okay. So, um, I didn't make copies. And I have other copies up here, um, for anybody who wants to see them. So, so each year, we, um, we have a budget that, that is put together, and it's based on our, our best estimate of what the revenues and the expenses will be in the county, um. And then, at the end of the year, um, we sometimes have to go through and, and make adjustments, um, for what actually happened. We have, we have a budget, and then expenses happen throughout the year, and so we need to make adjustments, um, for what actually happened, and that, and that's what we'd like to do for these twenty nineteen, um, uh, adjustments to, to the different funds.
So I think, I'm not understanding, I thought we were going to the two thousand twenty budget.
No, this is, um, these are the, what we had to do before the end of the year.
Well, I, I know what we, I know that, but I just asked you if we were gonna do the two thousand twenty or the two thousand nineteen adjustments.
Uh, it was the twenty nineteen.
I thought, I thought we were.
No, it was the twenty nineteen adjustments first.
Okay.
Sorry.
The, um, we didn't have to have a public hearing on the, the final for the budget.
All right, I'm with you.
Sorry for the confusion.
Yeah.
So, yeah, this is, all this discussion is the, completing the twenty nineteen budget.
So, um, so we've just got a list of, of budget adjustments to, to reflect what was actually spent i- in the twenty nineteen, so I, I can go over those. In the general fund, um, had a budget of twelve million nine hundred thirty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-eight, and, and again, this is the twenty nineteen budget. Um, we'd like to request an, an adjustment of one million sixty-three thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars for a final budget of fourteen million. In the B Road Fund, um, the twenty nineteen budget was four million three hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight. And we'd like to request a, an adjustment of one million six hundred and seventy dollars and, uh, one, one million six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, two hundred and twelve, uh, for a, for a final budget of six million. In the, uh, the, the Building Authority Fund, uh, that there was no, uh, budget at the, at the beginning of the year, uh, but as you know, they, um, the road shop is, is going through and, and, and doing that project. And so we'd like to request a, an adjustment of two million, uh, to make the final budget two million. Uh, the Public Health Fund, their, their twenty nineteen budget was one million one twenty-nine three seventy-three, and we'd like to request an adjustment of, of three hundred and seventy thousand six twenty-seven for, uh, a total budget of one point five million. The EMS Fund had a budget of six hundred, uh, six hundred thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars, and we'd like to request that adjustment of two thirty-nine six seventy for a total budget of eight hundred and forty thousand. The Road Capital Fund, uh, had a budget of sixty thousand, um, and we'd like to request an adjustment of five hundred and forty thousand to bring the final budget to six hundred thousand. In the landfill, uh, their twenty nineteen budget was three hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and we'd like to request an adjustment of one hundred and seventy-two thousand five seventy-three to make the final budget five hundred and twenty thousand. Tort Liability Fund, um, that, that budget, uh, amount for twenty nineteen was two hundred and nineteen thousand, and we're asking for a twenty-one thousand dollar adjustment to bring the total, the, the final budget to two hundred and forty thousand. The Tax Stability Fund, uh, had a, had a budget of hundred and twenty thousand, and asking for an adjustment of sixty thousand to bring that final budget to one hundred and eighty thousand. In the Library Fund, uh, that budget was five hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifteen, uh, with, and with a requested adjustment of six hundred and, six thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars to bring the final budget to five hundred and sixty thousand. And, um, the, these adjustments, um, that they're, they're reflective of what has been spent, but also what I didn't mention before is we, we still have a couple weeks in the year, and there are certain, um, anticipating certain bills to come in, and, and, and also bills that will come in January that are, that are for the twenty nineteen expenses, so, uh, so these requested adjustments, um, are in anticipation of, uh, of expenses that still need to come in for twenty nineteen, that we would cover them. Have any questions?
Commissioners?
Yeah, we, we, we reviewed all of this yesterday.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
This is almost like a rapid.
Just turn the time over to the public.
Yeah.
Anybody got a comment, questions, uh, in the audience? This is your public hearing, so, anybody have any comment or questions?
Are these all overspends? I mean, these are all debits to the account, debt credits to the account?
The, yeah, so, the budget from, our, our best guess budget for twenty nineteen, the, these adjustments would be, um, what was, what was spent more than the budget?
Put in the tax stability fund?
Uh, the tax, the tax stability fund is, is, um,
Money went back into that account?
Is, is interest. Um, and so we, we guessed a hundred and twenty thousand, but it looked like it might be a hundred and eighty thousand.
Interest rates vary during the year. So we had seven hundred, seven million five hundred dollars that we had invested. We thought it would bring us a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It brought us a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Right. That's a revenue increase.
Correct.
The rest are expense increases.
When we spend that, we can only spend the interest on that fund. We have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we can spend, but we have to make a budget adjustment in order to do that.
And normally when you do a budget adjustment, you show what account the money's coming out of to go into this fund? Can you explain that?
Hey. So, um, the, the, the money that the, the, these expenses have already happened for the most part, um, the, the, the money that is, the, that is coming in to kinda cover those is prob- has come in through, uh, pro- um, fund transfers or, or just in revenue.
From their savings?
Well,
From the fund balance.
There's other things too, Cheryl, we, during the year, we went to the CIB to get some funds to build a new shop. And, and, uh, we did not budget for that because we didn't know where we were gonna get the money from the CIB, but by the end of the year, we've been, um, awarded that money. So we have to, uh, even though it's not coming out of, of our funds, it's coming out of funds that we got from the CIB.
The two million?
The six million, yeah. So we, we have to, we have to make a budget adjustment to show that that money came in, and that, um, that same thing happened in the, well, maybe it didn't happen in the EMS. But, um, we got some money from the EMS, and then in the landfill, we had, we had some savings in the landfill, and Randy wanted to buy some equipment so he could start some closures of some cells down there. So we have to make a budget adjustment, we'll take money out of the landfill savings account and buy that equipment, but by law, we have to make these budget adjustments to do those kinda things at the end of the year because he's already purchased that equipment or, or is under contract to purchase it. So, we can't, we can't do it unless we make a budget adjustment at the end of the year.
And I, and thank you, I do understand that.
Don't, don't we have to show the, where the revenue, show the, the revenue side? Because this is just the expense side, so you're saying you got this money coming in, we taking this money out of savings. Don't you need to indicate that on your budget adjustments? So the balance is there?
I don't know by law whether we do or not, I, where's Kendall?
Right there. I don't know, thi- this is a budget question, and I, this is the first time I'm hearing about it, so I don't know, I don't have an answer for that question.
John?
I know that we do, so. The city, we all show where the revenue come from to cover the expense.
How the adjustments you made?
Well, I can just tell you, some of the money comes from places like CIB. Other money comes from, from our savings account within the county.
So your general fund balances?
Yeah.
Your portion of it. And then your grants?
But that's why it's important to show that side of this, so that we understand where the money's coming from that you use to, to increase these budgets.
Yeah, we'll get better.
Thank you.
We all will.
Right there.
Um, Road Capital Fund, the, there was a very large adjustment, I just wondered what that's about.
Okay, so, um, wi- with that adjustment, um, again, the, their budget for twenty nineteen was, was sixty thousand. Um, and, and what, what the, uh, what they do is they have a, uh, kinda like a, a purchase lease, um, where they do it annually, and they have four loaders where they, they, they purchase the loaders or lease the loaders for a year. Oh, I thought I, um, and then at the end of the year, um, or at the beginning of the next year, they, they, the county sells them back, um, to, to the same, to the place where they bought them, um, for, for, I think the Road Department said for four dollars more than they, than they bought them for. And so for whatever reason, that, um, that lease amount wasn't put in the twenty nineteen budget, but, so, so there was, the money was, was spent to, to purchase those loaders, um, um, but the, but there is also revenue that came in from, from selling back the, the loader from the previous year, which is, which kinda goes with the question of, um, of, of showing that revenue, um, um, whi- which we can work on.
That lease agreement's been very, very helpful to the county because we get brand-new equipment and use it for a year and sell it back for basically what we, what we purchased it for, plus four dollars or whatever it is, and, uh, so we don't have to do a lot of maintenance, put new tires on, those kinda things, so we think it's a, we think it's a good practice for the Road Department to-
So the five hundred and forty thousand was a revenue increase?
What?
Was it increased revenue?
Yeah, because we, we sold, we sold the, the loaders back for six hundred, for six hundred, plus a few dollars, and then we expend it the next year. But we, we, the agreement will give it back to us at the end of the year.
Who, whom does the county lease, uh, these loaders?
That's a secret.
They've been afford to do that till.
Who is it?
I, I, I'm unsure.
With any, it's, it's one of the big dealerships like Caterpillar or-
I've seen him with Wheeler.
Wheeler, Machine Rages.
Almost too good to be true.
So it's actually a very, it's a good program where we can lease them, um, so we get to use them. But then typically, uh, oftentimes when you turn around and they buy it back, you make money off of that.
There, there are a couple of situations, I think, that you're limited to three hundred hours per loader, so.
Are they limited on the number of hours and?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Bill? Alright, well.
I just wanna say thank you for, for allowing the, the questions to be asked, and, and again, I just wanna point out that it's so important that we are following budgets. And, y- you know, that you have a process that if someone's gonna overspend, that you address that at the time that it occurs and, and give a reason to, to the, to you as commissioner so that you understand why we're over budget. I think that's important, and then just adding in if these are increases to revenues or, or increases to expenses would be extremely helpful in this report as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much, I think, um, during the time when we had a public hearing, uh, one of you have mentioned that, um, there, there should be a mechanism to where we don't overspend. So, well, we're looking at those, and we will acknowledge that, and thank you very much. Um, if there's no more comment, uh, I would ask the commissioners to come out of the, uh, public hearing.
I'll make a motion to come out of public hearing.
Motion, second by Commissioner Gray Eyes, uh, any comment, question, last, nothing? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, now we are out of the, um, public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion that we make the appropriate two thousand nineteen fund adjustments to the two thousand nineteen budget as listed on the sheet and as presented to the public.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Adams. It is referred to the, uh, item number four, the resolution adopting two thousand two San Juan County General Fund and Related Budget. Um, Mr. Nelson is here.
No, that's the two thousand twenty.
Oh, okay, the one that we just heard.
I'm making a motion on the two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
I know it's confusing.
Well.
I was confused.
Um, Commissioner Gray Eyes, okay, we have a second, and, uh, all those in favor in adopting the two thousand twenty County General Funds?
Two thousand, uh, two thousand nineteen budget.
Oh, two thousand nineteen, yeah. But it says two thousand twenty, right, here, two thousand nineteen, correction on that. Yeah, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Now, what were we in favor of?
Now, we are-
Well, nineteen and twenty is what I heard.
For the record, the, uh, the adoption of the budget on two thousand nineteen that Commissioner Adams has motioned, and second by Commissioner Gray Eyes, for the San Juan County General Fund, we just barely recognize that we've, um, uh, voted on that, so now we go down to item number four. Resolution adopting two thousand twenty San Juan County General Fund and Related Budget. John?
Okay, so we have, uh, uh, um, proposed, it says approved, but maybe that was preemptive, um, budgets for, for twenty twenty. Um, so after, after our meeting yesterday, um, with our discussions, just wanna go over, um, the, the revenues and, and, um, and expenses for, for the proposed twenty twenty budget, um, in, in the different funds. Um, we have a, in, in the general fund, uh, we have ant- and, and again, these are, these are our best guesses, and to, um, a- as far as revenue that we, that we believe will come in and expenses, uh, that, that we believe will, will occur based on our discussions with departments and, and their budget requests. Um, uh, we have for twenty twenty, um, anticipated revenue of fourteen million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-two, um, with, um, with, with the expenditures being the same, uh, fourteen million, uh, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-two. Um, in the, uh, I, I, I guess going back before we move on to the other fund, and in this, in this, uh, budget request, um, it, we, we went through and, and were able to, to, to cut areas in, in certain departments. Um, it does not represent a, uh, a cost of living increase, um, and, or, or any potential new, new hires, um.
New positions.
New, sorry, new positions, yes.
Right.
If a, if a position becomes vacant, then we hire.
Yeah, if it became vacant, we'd still have the latitude to, to replace that person. But no, no new position.
But no new, mhm. Um, the, the, the B Road Fund, um, we have a, a anticipated revenue of five million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars, uh, with it. Yes, sorry.
Would you make one clarification?
Sure.
Before we go much further? Does this budget represent a tax increase or a no-tax increase?
This, sorry, thank, thank you, it, 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 it does, um, it does represent, uh, the ta- the proposed tax increase.
Then will you explain what will happen in June?
So.
We have not passed the tax.
We have not passed the tax increase yet.
Right.
Um, so, i- in June of next year, that is, that is when the commission will, um, look at, uh, values and the proposed certified rate from the, from the state.
That's when we vote on the tax increase.
And vote, and vote on whether to accept that tax increase.
So if we did not accept the tax increase, we'd have to have a budget adjustment to this budget because this budget does include the, the two hundred and eighty thousand or whatever.
Right.
Uh, for the tax increase, so, um, we're, we're passing a budget that has the potential tax increase in it. But we're not voting on the tax increase, and we can't vote on the tax increase until June, when we get the certified rates from the state. So, um, I'd-
Not, not putting in, it in here would, would not even allow you to have that option.
Now, is everybody confused? Because that's certainly what we're trying to do. We're, we're, it, it's not, it's not a real difficult thing, we're not passing a tax increase because we're passing this budget. But the budget is including the amounts if we pass the tax increase in June. Okay, and we won't spend the, all of these budgets by June. So we'll have some time to make some adjustments to the budget that is adopted today. We'll have, we'll be able to do that in June, whe- i- if we don't pass the tax increase. Right, Matt?
So if we, um, yeah, if we don't include it in our budget now, you essentially have to start the whole entire process.
Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't include it.
In the budget, you are going down the road to have a tax increase. When the certified rates come out, whether or not we make those adjustments, we'll be up to a century. So we're, we're heading down the road like we are.
Yes.
Just like we said.
No, that, that, that's correct. No, he confused me.
Okay.
No, that, that, that is correct.
Does that make sense, Cheryl? Do you understand what I said?
Yeah. Thank you.
The horse is behind cart four one.
Go ahead, go ahead, okay.
Continue.
Okay, so, the, the B Road Fund, um, we have anticipated revenue of five million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and anticipated expenditures of, uh, se- seven million two hundred and sixteen eight hundred and ninety. Um, for a shortfall of, uh, one million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine sixty-seven. The municipal building, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Am I being obnoxious? We have a big reserve in the B Road Fund.
Correct.
So.
I, I think it's around fifteen or seventeen.
Seventeen million.
Seventeen million, mhm.
So we can balance that budget with the research.
With, with the fund balance, yeah. Uh, the, the Municipal Building Authority, um, anticipated revenue of one million three hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And, and the expenditures are anticipated to be the same, one million three hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred. Uh, the Health Fund, um, anticipated revenue is, a- and this also includes that potential tax increase. Um, of one million four hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-six thousand, uh, with expenditures of one million one hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and forty-two, uh, with a, uh, and that, uh, increase, uh, or, it, so expenditures are two, two hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and thirty-four less than revenue anticipated. Uh, the EMS, um, the anticipated revenue in EMS is seven hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-one. And the, uh, anticipated expenditures is seven hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-one. Um, and that, there is already, um, part of the expenditures from the general fund, and the revenue here is, is a, is a transfer to cover anticipated shortfall.
Can I just make a statement about EMS?
Uh-huh.
It's one of the most difficult departments the county tries to ma- uh, maintain as our ambulance service. We rescue people from all over the world in San Juan County because basically people come to San Juan County to get lost or hurt. And, um, when we do that, we deliver them to the appropriate
Places?
Uh, medical facility. and at some point, we try to bill them for the ambulance service, and for some reason, nobody wants to pay. And we write off several hundred thousand dollars a year in ambulance costs, because people won't pay.
Yep.
We have tried to use collection services to help us collect that money. We've tried, we, we've actually prayed about it, hoping that we'd get divine intervention, that hasn't worked. Um, tells you something about the character of the commission, I guess. So, uh, it's a, it's a really, really difficult thing, and it's been a big drain on our current budget for a number of years, because we have not, we just haven't been able to collect for what service we provide, and, um, and so there's always a deficit there that the county's trying to, trying to make up. Um, I'll just do a little editorial while I'm at it. I'm not sure why the county's in this business. I really am not. At one time, the hospitals were running the ambulance service. I don't know what changed, it was before I became a commissioner. But, um, I don't know. The, the hospitals are doing well, they're making money. The county's subsidizing the ambulance service. And who's getting the benefit? That's just my editorial opinion. Anyway, go on.
Okay.
I don't want any questions.
The, the next fund is the capital projects fund. Uh, we didn't receive any capital, uh, projects
No.
uh, re- request, although, uh, uh, looks like we have a, uh, an eight hundred dollar, um, interest, uh, go- going into that. Um, next fund is the road capital fund. Um, the anticipated revenue from that is a hundred and five thousand for the year, and, uh, expenditures of, of fifty thousand four hundred and sixty-three, uh, for net increase of fifty-four thousand five seven, five thirty-seven. The, the landfill, uh, fund, uh, have anticipated income of a hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, um, and a, uh, and, and, and expense, um, of seven hundred and, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand for a, a, a decrease of, uh, five hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine. Um, and, and the reason for that is, is money, at this point, that, um, that was in the, the fund, uh, was used to help to cover this, uh, the, this settlement payment in January. Um, uh, tort liability, um, anticipated revenue of two hundred and forty thousand and and anticipated expenditures of the same, two hundred and forty thousand. The tax stability fund, um, anticipated revenue, which is interest of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, with the, uh, same expenditures, the transfer going out to the general fund of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And lastly, the library fund, um, revenues, anticipated revenues of five hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars, which includes the, the, the estimate or the anticipated tax increase, and a, uh, expenditures of five hundred and seventy-four thousand, uh, one hundred and twenty-five, uh, the shortfall of eighteen thousand three seventy-two. Any, any other questions about the proposed twenty twenty budget?
Commissioners, are you in a position to adopt this particular budget, or are there any questions before that?
Well, again, I'll just, I'll make this comment, that some places we have some shortfalls. It's not that we're encouraging people to overspend their budget. It's, it's simply a case where some of those budgets have some reserves, and we can draw from those reserves to, to balance the budget. We intend to look at every department when it comes to, um, somebody that retires or leaves that department, and whether, whether we have to hire a new hire, or whether we can do something different, do something more creative, we're trying to, we're trying to tighten the purse, purse strings as tight as we can, and um, be judicious. I will say this, twenty years ago, interest rates were seven or eight percent. The county had uh, upwards of forty million dollars in reserve. We would put into our general fund over two million dollars a year in just interest off of our reserve accounts. So we had a general fund that was, was getting, uh, additional money of, of two-plus million dollars a year. Now with interest rates down around one percent or less, we're getting a hundred thousand, where we used to get two or three million a year. That's been, that's been a problem since interest rates went way down, and we're spending reserves, so when they come back up, we're not gonna have as much to gain interest on, so, um, but it's not our intention to, to overspend our budgets, but sometimes to provide all the services that, that people expect and demand out of us, um, some, some of those funds, um, need some help from the reserve funds. I guess that's all I want to say.
Thank you for that. The last comment and explanation, Commissioner Gray, Commissioner Adams. Um, Gray Eyes, any comment? There be none? I'd like to, uh, have a motion in place to, uh, adopt this particular resolution.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the two thousand twenty tentative or final budget, as explained by, um, our county auditor.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, okay. We have a second. Any other comment? There be none?
Comment.
Oh, comments, sure.
Should there be a provision, a line or inch in there that, uh, reflects the, uh, tax increase? Is included in this one?
Uh, you, you, you can, i- in that.
Kind of have, uh, I guess it's, it's state law that requires uh, provision or counties to provision those um, difficult um, line inclusion of increased tax, when it's not gonna be considered until later on. It's, it seems odd to, to be working, uh, the next step, not having a clear path, just assuming well, by by the next summer, we should be able to consider this. That, that's just, seems very unusual to me. I mean, it's, the process is, I guess, I don't know who, who made that requirement.
It's the state, but I just say, it's the processes, uh, set like that, the, um, um, we're always behind on our funding and, um, the assessments and the assessed values, uh, the receipt of taxes, uh, from people spending taxes and setting a certified tax rate. Um, and so, we're always about six months behind, uh, on the county system, uh, to set that, and so we're always trying to balance and forecast ahead of receiving the money. Uh, and so, what we're doing today is, we're approving the budget with the potential increase. Your next item on the agenda is approving a resolution for those tax increases.
Correct.
And then, when it comes time, when we are released and given this certified tax rates, according to all of this, later on in June, it's up to you as commissioners, whether or not you accept that state certified rate, or do less, um, and, or even go back and, and hold steady like we've done in the past. But those don't come out until June. Um, we don't receive those from the state until later on, and that's when we have to make that final decision.
So, are we approving the tax increase or not today?
So we're, you're going down that road to prove it, even on the resolution.
It's, uh,
John David has the resolution for the next item.
Approval.
And then whether or not you set that certified tax rate at that amount?
Well, we do that certified tax rate every year, but, but I was told yesterday that we would not have to approve the tax increase until June.
Mhm.
Yeah, that, that's.
The tax increase that we had a public hearing on.
Your re- what is your resolution state there for your next item?
For the next item?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it is hereby resolved that the governing body of San Juan County approves the following property tax rates and revenues for the year twenty twenty. And again, that's, uh, you're, you're approving that option to be able to to use that. I, I don't believe that, that in the certified tax rate, when they come out with that, that is not, this is not included in that.
Then you can make the adjustments.
Mhm.
So, even though we, we put it there, that's so we'll have the option in June
Yes.
to accept the tax increase, right?
When they come out.
Okay, alright.
Yes, that's the way I understood too. So, a motion's in place to adopt this particular item, and, um, Commissioner Gray Eyes seconds the motion, but, uh, wanted to modify the, um, uh, the motion, or i- is that still stand, or should you, you're just gonna?
All I'm saying is, I have an issue with the, the law where you do a provisional approval of the tax increase until the future. Uh, but the other part of the budget is, um, just stating that. The other thing is my concern, past drainage of, uh, the general fund to this day. I believe we are highly impacted to those, uh, appropriations that were made unconsciously. So, I don't know what impact it will have, uh, but seems like, uh, we have to deal with those impacts. I, Mr. Adams says also, tax rates were very favorable, return, turning, returning revenues to the county, but no. They had dwindled down, so, uh, those are some of the conditions that, that need to be understood by the public. Uh, as I can see. The other thing that was mentioned was relating to the, the operation and agreement. Those are, um, depending on appropriations. And, uh, I think I understood the, the gentleman that was here saying, you're not doing anything, the two of you. I, I don't know what he actually meant. We are in communication with the, uh, the Navodish in terms of what we're doing, what needs to be done. But those are not, I guess, uh, not readily, funds are not readily available due to the funding cycle provisions under the federal, which is the Bureau of Industry and so forth. So, those, that needs to be understood. And not, uh, shoot from the hip, right? You need to draw your gun and say, yeah, I understood. So that, that's what I'm dealing with.
Hmm.
It doesn't, it doesn't make sense, uh, rather than, you know, asking the question directly to, as individual, we can provide those information. But if there's no question, we're not able to disseminate or have people understand what the process takes place and what's going on. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner Gray Eyes. A motion has been set in place and seconded by, uh, Commissioner Gray Eyes, and please well note that the information and concern that the commissioner has. I think it's information that we brought before the community, that, that we will do what we can to make sure that everybody's not hurt by the tax increase. I think that's the concern that, uh, Mr. Gray Eyes, Commissioner Gray Eyes is alluding to, so with that, thank you very much, and, 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 um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, David, the next item's still yours, item number five.
Right, and that, and, and that is just the resolution, um, and uh, a- approving the, uh, the proposed, uh, tax increase to the general fund, the library, and and the public health.
Okay, um, commissioners? A motion will be in place, calling once.
Motion?
Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes. And do I have a second?
I guess I have a question on why we have to do this. Is this to, uh, satisfy the law, Mac, or is this, what, what's prompting us to have to do this resolution on the property tax revenue increase?
Y- yeah, it is to, to satisfy the, the law that this tax commission, um, th- through the truth and taxation process, we go through and, and, uh, have public hearings and notice it, and, um, but then, they, they need a resolution from the county, um, so.
Ten-year period, where everybody gets comfortable in their shoes and say, oh, we're not gonna get another tax increase until another ten years. That sort of gives them the the comfort zone, and when you do that, you, uh, sort of like, uh, give them a, a harsh response, so I'd like to recommend it.
Okay.
Can I speak to the issue?
Uh, recommended, was it requested with the, uh, with the motion, and do I have a second? After a second, then we can discuss the item.
Uh, okay.
Okay, we have a second, and now we're open for comment, mm.
Well, I think, I think what Willie is, is saying is partially correct, but maybe not totally direct, and I'm not sure I can even explain what my understanding is of it, Mac, maybe you can help us, or John David. We've never had, we haven't had a truth in taxation hearing since I've been a commissioner. That's been fifteen years going on, sixteen. So, with a truth in. So with a truth in taxation hearing, we have not raised the taxes that way. But in June of every year, you're allowed to capture new growth. You're allowed to capture the increase in in assessed valuation. You're allowed to capture some of those things and the state gives you three options. And it's not only the county, but the school district. I think that the cities get that option too. So if you choose to accept the certified tax rate, there will be an increase in your property taxes. But it it isn't of the nature that you have to have truth in taxation hearing. When you just accept the the certified tax rate. So you could get an increase in taxes through accepting the certified tax rate in June. But that's a different animal than a truth in taxation tax rate increase. Does that make any sense? So what he's saying is true from the standpoint of we haven't held a truth in taxation hearing in fifteen years that I, almost sixteen years that I know I'm gonna tell this year. But there has been some increases in property tax because the county chose to accept the certified tax rate. Some years we we accepted, some years we haven't. Some years we've we've even gone down. I think the the information we had in our hearing showed that from like two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, somewhere along in there, we accepted less than the certified tax rate. And actually, the the taxes collected went down and and I didn't, I didn't have one person come to the commission and say, my taxes have gone down. You need to raise them. Not one. But it it actually happened. It's a, it's an interesting
So if you're eager to have your tax increase, please contact Commissioner Adams. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken.
With that clarification, um, I guess we're ready to uh, call for the question. Um, any more comment questions, commissioners? There have been none. All those in favor?
I'll vote in favor because it leaves the option open, but I'm not voting in favor of a tax increase at this point.
That's where we all stand, sir. Thank you very much. With that, aye, I guess unanimous. Thank you very much. And um, I guess we're in for another public hearing to consider potential project for the CDBG fundings and programs for two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
I'll make the motion to go into public hearing to consider potential projects for the CDBG funding for two thousand twenty.
Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Aye. All those in favor? Okay, we are in public hearing. Um, let's see, uh, who guides us through this? Okay, Mac?
Yeah, every every year, if the county considers um, going through this the CDBG process, uh, we have to open it up for the public to provide uh, potential projects that the county may consider as a CDBG funding, um, opportunity. So in the past here, the county, we um, we participated in this process, received funds. Uh, the most recent that I have is um, the elevator here in this building. Um, and so typically, uh, the federal, the federal government, uh, federal program um, that has specific goals that they target, and and one of the goals they're targeting is projects that are um, centered and focused around um, aging and adults, so senior citizens. Uh, or um, projects that help with um, access. Um, which is why we have the elevator here is anybody with accessibility need. Uh, we now have a here so that they can access our public meetings. And so those make sense. By law, we're required to to have this public hearing to to entertain any potential projects. Uh, or commissioners, this is your time as well, if there's any specific projects that you would like uh, staff to um, put in for a potential um, funding for uh, the county. Uh, the cities, there are several cities that are that are going to be uh, doing this, filling out their own CDBG applications as well. The Navajo Nation uh, also has an opportunity through their mechanisms uh, to to seek funding on the Navajo Nation lands uh, through that CDBG process as well. But this is for those county areas. Um, and so that's kind of a brief explanation of of why we have to do this. Uh, if we are applying as a county, it's required that we go through this process.
Thank you. With that, um, folks, I guess you can weigh in on this while we're open. Ma'am?
Uh, you don't know how mu- how mu- much money is involved in these CBDG funds? I mean, how much is going to be available? Uh, and ask my question, I also have a proposed project which which may not be able to be done if you don't have enough money. But Spanish Valley has a great need for a gathering place for the community. Um, we don't have a place to meet about any anything. Um, uh, that's why a lot of our community, we don't have a real cohesive sense of community. And I feel that a meeting place would be it'd be a community center, um, a building, uh, that that would be a a large investment. Or maybe um, a a a structure where it could be added on to or something. I mean, I would even meet in a yurt, just someplace for the community to come together. Uh, or you know, like just for citizens to have a place to meet. Um, the library and Moab affords a meeting room for nonprofit groups to meet in. Um, and they often use government buildings. And we just don't have anything. And I know that with the new um, with the new in place, there are, there could be a opportunity to build something at on the county land at Old Airport Road and um, Spanish Valley Drive. Uh, I don't know what the county's planning to do with, is it ten acres it was purchased or five?
The the county purchased five and the San Juan Health District purchased five of a ten acre block from Sipa.
Well, I I don't know what if if the county ID has plans for every square inch. Or if there would be an opportunity to build some something that I think that would be the best thing to to start with.
We're gonna put a jail on there. So many criminals in Spanish Valley.
Well, anyway, I I, since we're visioning things, I just wanted to put that out. That's my wish list. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Has there been none? Back to the camp commission?
Um, I I I might be wrong, but I'm trying to remember and Doug, you're gonna have to help me because you were part of it, but at one time, I, is the CDBG funds administered by the AOG on a four county basis?
The seven county?
No, no, AOG out of price for carbon emery grams. I think it is. I think that's the way it's administered. Now, Doug and I concocted a little project. We agreed to let the other three counties have all of the CDBG money, which is, is it less than a hundred thousand a year, Doug? Do you remember?
It varied sometimes from a hundred fifty to two hundred fifty thousand.
We let them all have that money for a few years with the promise that when the time came, we had a need for an elevator and that did. We weren't ADA accessible. And we were gonna have to, we had to do something to to be able to use this building, so. The other counties agreed that they would use the money for three or four years and then one year, we would lump all of the money rather than peel piecemealing it out to each of the counties. We'd give it to San Juan and that's what we used to build, to put the elevator in this building. It was half a million dollars to put that elevator. But we were being threatened by different organizations that we did. We weren't ADA accessible and they were gonna sue us. But that's what San Juan County is all about. Somebody wants to sue us all the time. So that was the plan that we made. Doug was on the AOG board. I was on the AOG board and tell me, tell me if that's not the right explanation, Doug?
I think that might have happened after all that. We were doing that quite regularly for a while and we got told that they had to do it on a rating basis, uh, according to.
Yeah, then they started doing it on a, on a rating basis. But we slipped that under the rug a little bit, so.
Oh, that that's a, that really needs some ratings.
We got that, we got the elevator here, but.
So is that commitment still in place then with the AOG? Because this, I'm getting my marching orders and and the instructions from the seven county out of price and so.
I think that's what you're you're talking about. The seven county is a different organization than the AOG. The AOG is only four counties. You're getting this from Jerry Gamber, right? That's not seven county. Willie's the boss of seven county. So, um, this is from AOG and that's, that's what I'm trying to explain. I'm not doing a very good job. But it did, it varies from year to year. But it's divided up between four counties. And I, and I'm not sure, does the city get a piece of of the CDBG money too? Do you know?
Only if they've.
Only if you apply.
Only if they've applied. And so they had a stipulation this year, they had a mandatory meeting, um, that you had to attend in order to even apply.
Right.
And the the ones that were there, um, you had, um, Grand County wa- was there. Uh, you had Bluff was there, Blanding City was there, San Juan County, obviously.
So did that, did, did you have projects? Did you have a project, Bluff?
We're putting in for a project.
You are? And what about Blanding?
No.
Okay. And I I don't know of a project that the county is anticipating at this point, do you?
And that's what this meeting is about and the discussion, uh, to listen to the public, see if they had anything, the the center would be awesome, but that's, that's millions. I don't think they have that big of a piggy bank. We would have to have, we would have to have the estimates, um, kind of a preliminary design before we would even be able to.
Do you know what land costs in Spanish Valley?
That's why we want to build it on.
Do you know what we've paid for the land we have?
Well, I hope it was below market.
Sixty thousand an acre.
That's pretty cheap.
Pretty cheap. That's government price. And so this this discussion is for that, if there's any.
It's actually sixty five. We paid over seven hundred thousand dollars between the county and the health service district for that ten acres.
Well, who'd you buy it from?
Your best buddies. Who owns all the land in Spanish Valley. Yeah.
They cut you a deal, I guess.
I'd like to express also the need for my community. And uh, we have certain project, we know uh, CDBG uh, requirements is uh, partnership. Local money's uh, letter of commitment uh, needs to be in place. If there's any right away or those have to be done. Uh, we've been dealing with the uh, that for several years, but that was for what they call Indian community block grant out of regional, region nine. That goes to Arizona. I believe the map is five hundred million, something like that. But that's all the proposal, uh, these Indian tribes, they are down there. Twenty one Indian tribes apply for those. Yeah, so not much, uh, uh, is, well, last year it was down, the total budget was down, so. We've been preparing uh, concept plans for certain like convenience store. I was talking to economic development uh, down here. And CDBG money is can be used to for economic development also. So when you mentioned the store, the gas station, convenience store, those are projects. We have another sewer and water project of, um, that I've talked to you and written you on, which I don't know what the cost. Those estimate has to be determined, so I'd like to see those uh, in the public hearing statements in order to see if we can also put in a proposal for that.
With the sewer holes.
Willie, Willie's right. He may be able to double dip because I know CDBG money that goes directly to the Navajo Nation. Um, oh, what's the chapter president at Monument Valley?
James Attacay.
James Attacay is over CDBG funds for the Navajo Nation. So you might be able to get s- money there and
That, that's, that's.
Through the county both.
You read my mind.
But you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna leave Spanish Valley out in the cold.
We can look into it and see.
See, see what the the amount is.
And then restrictions, to me, uh, their restrictions were, to me, I would be concerned CDBG matching Navajo Nation CDBG, it's still federal funded from the housing and urban development. Um, and so I don't know if we can marry those two together, but I'll, I'll check. Yeah, get great comments. I appreciate your comments from from the public as well.
Mister Stevens from Nautsas Aunt Chapter wants to weigh in on this as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Adams, I've come from Navajo Mountain, a small community just south of here. And now like, well, it's kind of.
It's more than just south of here.
But we do have a senior center there in Navajo Mountain. Uh, built back in probably the early eighties. The floors are pretty much uh, falling apart. The tiles are coming up. Also, the water system is really not adequate to provide the safe potable water for the elderly that that uh, or actually provided meals in that um, complex. And um, the heating system, they had a pellet stove that um, that's pretty much worn out and off with the crockwood. So I think uh, that senior center is probably a good candidate for a project like this. And we've had requests coming in, uh, coming in from the people that actually uh, worked there at Senior Center. And if at all possible, I uh, I feel that we should, um, you know, be considered in this proposal and we can do whatever we can do. As for that, all the paperwork structures there, I'm sure we can get the schematic on the building and as to how how it was built and all that. Even if we could get a hundred thousand, we could like Bruce says, you know, we we've kind of learned how to double dip on on the reservation, so we can actually go through NRF or UNTF or even the tribe increase the amount of that money that 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 we're able to get it. We could actually put a base up on that complex. So.
Can you suggest something like that?
Be my comment from now, now on.
Well, Hank, you might be able to, to put an application in with Utah Navajo Trust Fund for something like that. You know, get part of the money there, part of the money from NRF, part of the money from CDBG at Window Rock and part of the money from the county, you know, I mean, there's a number of sources that you, that you have an opportunity to.
Especially for seniors. That's usually one of those that's, that's highlighted and targeted and encouraged, uh, projects and so. So I'll look at that one as well. Thanks, Hank.
But Matt, they, they sound like good projects. If you wanna submit them, I, I think we should.
Yeah, I'll work on, work on.
Maybe contact all the chapters and see if they have anything scheduled.
Yeah, yeah.
Might be another way of doing it. Okay, anybody else if there be none?
I just wanted to mention that, uh, the, the senior center that was just mentioned is something that my environmental health director has brought up to me numerous times. It needs to be addressed. He'd like, so you have public health department support on that one specifically. That one's been brought up several times. You can include address. Just wanted to add that.
Thanks.
Okay. If there be none, I guess, uh, order is to get out of the, um, public comment. Uh, motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes to get out of the, uh, public hearing and, um, do I have a second? Do we have a second? All those in favor? Aye, thank you very much. Okay, do we need to act on that or just okay, good? All right, well, the next item would be, uh, item, item eight and David?
Okay. So, um, I think we, we talked about yesterday, um, and mentioned that, uh, our attorney Kendall Los has mentioned a few times through, throughout this year, the, the, the change in, in, um, Utah code, um, regarding referendums and initiatives. Um, and, and, and part of that change, um, is that the county needs to have, uh, as of January one, twenty twenty, a, a, what's called a voter participation area map. That, that has been approved and cur- currently, uh, any referendums or initiatives that are filed, um, and deemed preferable, um, petitioners or, um, sponsors can go gather signatures from wherever they would like to, to meet those signature requirements. What, what this voter participation area map does is, uh, break the county into, into four areas that are contiguous and, and compact and, and is, um, equal and, as equal as possible in, in, in population. And it would require any, a- any sponsors, petitioners, um, who have filed referendums and initiatives to, to go to at least three of the four areas to gather the, uh, the required number of signatures, um, to further the, that process. Showed you the map yesterday. I don't know if you have any, any questions or not. I- i- if not, the, the request is just to, to pass the resolution, uh, approving the, uh, the map.
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution pertaining to the voter participation area and substantially e- equal population for the purpose described in Utah Code two zero A dash seven dash five zero one and two zero A dash seven dash six zero one.
Okay, Commissioner Adams make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, uh, Gray Eyes. Any other comment, question? There be none? All those in favor? Aye. We?
Okay. The, the only thing, uh, I'd like to reference. Uh, seems like everything is spare at the moment. We know that this was gonna happen for a long time, but January first, twenty twenty is just around the corner.
Right, and it did kinda.
Kind of, uh, a delay type of game.
And it did kinda sneak up on, sneak up on us a little bit. Um, we had the staff that cre- created the map and, um, I'm not a, a map expert, but, you know, took some time to, to do that. But, eh, you know, eh, loo- looking at the map and, um, and again, you're, you're welcome to request and make changes. Have, uh, additional map options, um, be made that could come back and we could, um, choose from one of those maps i- i- if you would like. We are just trying to, to, to get a map in place so that we could be in compliance with laws of January.
I don't think Mister, um, Gray Eyes is trying to be obnoxious. I think.
Oh, no.
Much to know that if any information like that, please bring it before us.
Right.
So that way we don't get into shambles with the, uh, with the citizens and and try to move on something and we try not to shove these things down their throat. So please do.
Did, to c- come back with, with more map options?
Any information that's gonna come before that's gonna be affecting the community in the county.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, a motion was made and a second? You already did make the second one, yeah, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, item number nine, Mister, um, Mac McDonald.
So what you have before you is the interlocal agreement that was discussed, um, previously in the work session, is the agreement between San Juan County and the town of Bluff. Um, this is, uh, the modifications that were presented, uh, from the previous agreed interlocal agreement back in December twenty eighteen, um, with the modifications, uh, for this new one. During the work session, there was, um, a discussion about potentially adding different language uh, to this agreement. So it's a little bit more clear on that transition for, um, the section on land use and building development. And so if you want, you can either approve it or you, I can make the changes and then bring it back to you. It's kinda up to you what, how you want to proceed with that.
Well, thank you, uh, um, Mister McDonald. Um, Commissioners, before you is the, um, an uh, approval and adopting the, uh, the interlocal agreement. And I think we've, uh, heard and understand where things are at with the community. So it is your, uh, recommendation and your, um, your, uh, resolution. So however you feel best fit for the community and that will be the position that you will be taking. So, uh, at this point in time, I'm looking for a motion to, uh, uh, a recommendation or approval of this particular item.
I'm not, um, I'm not comfortable with what I see as a violation of private property rights that I think need to be addressed in the, in the interlocal agreement before I would, um, wanna approve it.
A motion is not made yet, but a comment has been, uh, expressed by, um, Commissioner Adams. I think we need to, uh, establish a motion before we make recommendation or to discuss the item. Do I have a motion?
Like a motion to, um, refer this issue back to the administration and also to the Bluff. If there's any sense of conflict resolution, you need to sit down face to face.
I'll second that.
And not be a, uh, use the adversities, just come to some consensus, please. That way we can orderly promote that vehicle that you have purchased to move forward down the, down the road, not the river. Thank you very much.
Motion has been made with a modification to refer the, um, this particular item back to the administration and the community of Bluff to discuss and, uh, made some several changes and second by Commissioner Adams. Um, with that, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item would be, uh, item ten, um, Sheriff Turgason.
Uh, he presented that in the.
Yeah, we're just, we're just gonna.
I'm ready to make a motion on it.
Yes.
Go ahead and approve it.
Yes, thank you very much. We had an item before us and I, I believe that I've signed that and now we're just ratifying that particular resolution. And Commissioner Adams make a motion and Commissioner Gray Eyes second that motion with all that in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much and go have your fun. All right, now, going down to item eleven, approval and adopting the constitutional ordinance for the San Juan County Historical Preservation. That's another item that we've approved and it's another ratification. So with that, a motion would be in place. Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes and second by Commissioner Adams. And, uh, thank you very much. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll see you down in Ojito.
Okay, I'll be there.
All right, the next item on the agenda will be item twelve, approving the letter to support the Utah coal and Colorado coal commu- communities. Innovation projects, Bruce?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve this particular item for the commissioner to, chairman to sign the letter in behalf of the two other commissioners for the communities that are impacted by, uh, by the production of ore, uh, coal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Uh, any comment? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. You unanimously sent, sent that letter to those community as soon as possible.
Yeah, Matt, if you have signed it, Matt can get it back to you.
I have it right here for signature.
We have, um, item thirteen, the new hire. After that, I believe that we, we had, uh, two items that we've, uh, added onto the agenda.
No, we just moved to the commissary course to.
Oh, okay, okay. So those, those are, those became an action item to where we need to act on those as well. Thirteen, fourteen and fifteen because the commissioner's report became sixteen.
And so, yeah, you adjusted back above, so that was all we had, other than the new hires and commissary.
Yeah, that was the two thousand nineteen budget adjustments.
Okay, good, all right. Okay, uh, do we need, Walter? You're the next individual on the agenda to, uh, with the new hire.
Got two new hires to propose. We're, we need to hire a North Shop mechanic and a public health business manager slash vital record supervisor. For the North Shop mechanic position, we're recommending Bruce Regalotto for that. And for the business manager, vital record supervisor, we're recommending Kelly Vess.
Commissioners?
I'm okay with what I'm, I'm making a motion to approve.
Commissioner Adams motion to approve and second by Commissioner Gray Eyes, both of the resident, uh, hires or one? Okay, both of them.
Comment would be, you ever get any Navajos or other nationalities? What's the, uh?
We do, yeah.
What's the, the game?
What's the game?
Yeah.
We, we, we do have Navajos that are. Well, actually, the last deputy we hired is Navajo and the last dispatcher we hired at the sheriff's office are both Navajo. Mister Totachini and a Mister Dash. Depends on the position who we.
Tony Dash.
No.
No, I, yeah. I thi- I think it's a relative if it is, but no, it's not Tony.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
With that information, uh, you satisfied?
Yes.
Sure, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, commission reports, uh, who would like to start? Commissioner Adams?
My report's pretty short. I went to the membership meeting of USIP and they were really hopeful that, uh, Commissioner Gray Eyes was gonna be able to attend and vote in that meeting. They wanted to tell you, you're welcome to come up there and visit with him anytime you want. Um, but I went ahead and cast your vote for you. I voted for me.
Double dipping.
I wasn't running. I vo- I voted for the other people. Um, I have, um, we had a, this was the membership meeting. This Thursday, I have the regular board meeting of USIP. I'll be traveling Thursday up and back, back down on Friday. I also was able to attend, uh, the CIB meeting, which was on the twelfth. And we had very few projects there. Most of them were water projects. And we were able to fund them with a package of loan and grant. Um, so it went pretty smooth. There's no CIB meeting in January. There'll be a funding meeting in, uh, February. And other than that, um, I've just gotta hurry home and get my red suit ready.
Mister Gray?
Okay, what? Well, um, December second, we met Sweetwater Chapter. And, uh, met with, uh, President Ness and his division directors. And we were able to, uh, exchange, uh, needs, the needs of the, uh, the local chapters, all the way from Navahoman, Ojito, then also, um, Red Mesa, Mexican Water, Anna.
Your town.
They were all present.
Your town meeting in Blanding.
We had a, a good meeting. Next meeting is, uh, in March, March sixth. Um, at Tis.
Mm-hmm.
T- Tisto, T- no, Tisantlas. So, um, we will be preparing and I expressed at that meeting that I submitted, uh, some of the concerns and issue to, to the nation's staff and Mister President also. I never got a response back. Uh, that's my concern, so hopefully, uh, I'm around or before that, I will be able to get some response from the Navajo Nation. Um, we had a meeting on the third here, uh, San Juan County Commission. The fifth is when I traveled to, uh, well, the public meeting also. We had a public meeting the following day. So I stayed around in, in the cellar for a couple of days and one night and then got out of town. Um, for reauthorization then, then on the seventh, I believe. Um, for reauthorization then, then on the seventh, I believe he was, uh, another meeting that I attended, so, um, the health board meeting, Mr. Kirk, uh, we had a, a good session at meeting on the twelfth in Blandy. Uh, gives me a, a good time to sleep in because he usually schedules his meeting at noon and on, so, uh, at nine or ten or so. Western Agency meeting, we went, uh, Mr. Chapter President, Mr. Hank Stevens is also the president of Western Navajo Agency Council, president. And we attended that on the, what is it, the fourteenth. And then, uh, yesterday we met on the budget. Today here and then the twentieth I'll be in uh, price for that seven county infrastructure. We're presenting. We're trying to hopefully, uh, fast track the, um, what they call the right of way for the road connection between Navajo Mountain and Ojito. So in reference to that, we, we are meeting with the Navajo Nation President on the twenty third at Nkienta. Uh, so I invited, uh, Mr. McDonald there also. So, uh, hopefully we have enough guns to, uh, have the president say, okay, I'll go for it. So that's what we're doing. Other than that, we have a chapter meeting and, uh, dinner on the twenty second. So you're invited. I was assigned to bring the drinks, so. They didn't, they didn't tell me how many, so I'll just have a cup. Thank you very much. That's my story and I'll stick to it.
No matter what, yeah. Well, thank you very much, Commissioners and, um, folks. Thank you for coming around and being a part of our meeting. And, uh, my, uh, report is somewhat short as well. I will be, um, driving the, uh, the county roads. Uh, probably all next week. I have a map that's been, um, printed out to look at some of the, um, uh, the roads. Um, some time ago, we, uh, released, uh, we did a, a media release to, to have report on the San Juan County roads on the reservation. And, um, the medias are starting to call and I'm gonna be forwarding some of the, uh, the roads to them. And I'll be doing most of that my time from Anna, probably all the way down to Navajo Mountain if I could. And, uh, we had our, um, Northern Agency Council, um, Saturday and, uh, Ninhunza Chapter to talk about the impacts of the, uh, of the Utah Navajos in San Juan County. And again, as we were talking about the roads, the end dot was slipping notes to me as I was making report saying that they're already on it and they're working on it and they're gonna do what they can to help us. And I told them that I get these messages almost every day, almost every hour, but nobody's doing nothing about it. So it's about time that somebody starts moving on these things because other than that, I'm gonna still continue to jump up and down until somebody starts grading those roads. So that happened and, um, other than that, um, Anna Chapter had their, uh, meeting, uh, yesterday and Christmas turn. I dropped off my ham and my, my, uh, roast beef over there and I had to be up here yesterday. So other than that, I'll be around. Any other community meetings, anything happening, any snow? And, uh, we'll try to attend and be part of, uh, the best way that we can. And other than that, please take care of yourselves and there's, seem to be every new, new bugs around. It sounds like there are more flu and cold coming around that we're unfamiliar with. And people are getting really, really bad, um, cold. And it sounds like, um, it comes with diarrhea and whatever it is, they're telling people to stay home. It's really not a whole lot of, uh, protection for that. So if you feel kind of groggy, stay home. Bruce is going to clinic at four o'clock and I'll be headed to my clinic at the same time. So we're both not feeling well, but other than that, uh, we'll be okay. So thank you very much and, uh, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Gray Eyes. Do I have a second? Second, all those in favor? Thank you very much. We all adjourn.